There will be one period of general public comment tonight. If you would like to participate, please call right now at 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in a queue until we begin public comment. We have three announcements this evening. The Burbank City Clerk's Office is accepting applications for one vacancy on the Senior Citizen Board for an unexpired term ending July 31st, 2022. The deadline to submit an application for this vacancy is Wednesday, October 20th at 5:00 PM. In addition to the City Clerk's Office is currently accepting applications for one vacancy in the Art and Public Places Committee for an unexpired term ending July 31st, 2022. The deadline to submit an application is Thursday, November 4th, 2021 at 5:00 PM. If interested, please apply online at burbankca.gov/BCCapplication. For more information, please contact the City Clerk's Office at 818-238-5851 or email Item number two. Burbank Reads aims to bring the community together through the shared act of reading. Throughout the month of October, community members are invited to check out the books from the Burbank Public Library location or online. Join in a book discussion and participate in a variety of activities and special events. For complete program details, pick up a brochure at any Burbank library or visit our website, Item number three. The City of Boo Bank Parks -- oh, I got council member Schultz to look up on that one. Again, the City of Boo Bank Parks and Recreation Department will be hosting several spooktacular activities for all ages this Halloween. Please note, online registration is required for all events. McCambridge Recreation Center has transformed into two haunted house adventure escape rooms, perfect for ages eight years and up. This event will run for five nights, October 22nd through the 23rd, 29th, 30th, and 31st. Registration is $20 per person. Here's another groovy one for Halloween. Valley Skate Park is hosting its annual Halloween Skate Fest, filled with tricks and treats for all ages, on Saturday, October 30th, from 5:00 PM to 8:30 PM. Show us your best skate tricks and compete in our all-ages competition for great prizes. This free event is open to everyone, including skaters, non-skaters, and spectators. Other fun activities include food activities, trick-or-treat stations, raffle, costumes demo, music, and more. Skate competition participants must register prior to the event. And you're probably wondering, all this excitement is that we on the council received a really unique letter from our last council meeting by a young student that wanted to have choices instead of trick-or-treating for the safety of all because of COVID-19. And her letter touched all the council's heart, and the council and the city manager, they put on the thinking caps, and now we have some options for Halloween instead of trick-or-treating. You can go join some of these Boo Bank Parks and Recreation Departments, which are hosting several spooktacular activities for the youngsters. We do have a few sold-out events, but we encourage community members to join the waitlist for the following very popular activities. The annual Floating Pumpkin Patch will be held at the Verdugals Aquatics Facility on Sunday, October 24th, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. The main pool, Halloween activities and games are available throughout the event, including pumpkin decorating contests and a very cool costume contest. The first outdoor Halloween Lane event will be held at McCambridge Park on Sunday, October 31st, from 2:00 PM to 5:00 PM. The outdoor event will feature carnival games, photo opportunities, treats and prizes, and a scarecrow scavenger hunt. For more information on these great groovy events throughout the city and registration, please visit burbankca.gov/Halloween. We have one recognition on the agenda this evening. The Burbank City Council would like to recognize the recipient of the 2021 Rex Andrews Police Scholar Award. I'd like to call our Chief of Police, Chief Albinis. Will you please be kind enough to introduce the award to the community, Chief?
Thank you, Mayor Frutos. Good evening, Vice Mayor Telemontes, council members Springer, Anthony, and Nick Schultz. Good evening. It's really a pleasure to introduce the Rex Andrews Award that is done by the Burbank Rotary that began in 1994. Rex Andrews had a pretty incredible career in life. He started out as a police officer in Wichita, Kansas, ended up serving during World War II, was part of the team that reorganized, restructured Berlin and Munich's police forces. Ultimately, came back to the United States and was involved in law enforcement, was a chief in Highland Park, Illinois. Ultimately, was selected to be the chief of the Burbank Police Department, served from 1953 to 1971. Rex Andrews was a proponent of professional law enforcement. He really encouraged education and professional development. The Rotary Club identified one of his wishes moving forward, and they structured a scholarship for continuing education for law enforcement. So I'm going to introduce Rotary's Carolyn Blandell, and she will talk about the recipient of this year's Rex Andrews Award. It is a really big deal for our department for continuing education. Carolyn, I'll hand it to you.
Thank you. For some reason, I was on video earlier, but now my video's gone out, so I'm just going to speak because I can't seem to find video again. It's kind of muted out. But we had the privilege today at the Burbank Noon Rotary to have two guests, Captain Dennis Cremens and Captain Travis Irving were there today to accept the award in lieu of Officer Ashley Burt not being there. So we presented a $1,000 check to them, forward to Ashley for her role in graduating. While she did honors last year of 3.92, I think was her grade average, and she has been on the force for the amount of time that we have put in, which is -- she has to be -- the applicants have to be full-time sworn employee of the police department and possess the eligibility for a post certificate or greater, and has six units of semester units or equivalent in the previous calendar year of a 3.0 or higher average, which she did. She was a 3.92, which is almost a straight-A student. So we were honored, and we really enjoyed giving this. We had a full house today, and Captain -- well, immediate past Chief Scott Ledchase was there and also gave his speech on Ashley. So we were sorry we couldn't meet her in person, but she did give her thank you over a video conference, which I think is going to be played here again tonight. And we thank the Burbank Police Department again for allowing us to present this award because this is very dear and near to our hearts, because Rex Andrews was a member of our Rotary group for years as he was chief. So we thank you, and it was a pleasure doing this for the year 2021.
Thank you so much, and please thank the Rotarians for honoring our police officer. Again, thank you, Chief Albinis and Ms. Blandell, and congratulations to Officer Ashley Burt for a receipt of this prestigious award. Officer Burt, on behalf of the entire city council, we would like to present you with for demonstrating the ideas of integrity, professionalism, and scholarship in law enforcement. Officer Burt is not able to join us tonight, but she did send us a video saying a few words. Please play the video.
I would like to express my honor in being chosen to receive the Rex Andrews Scholarship Award and my continued -- I would like to express my honor in being chosen to receive the Rex Andrews Scholarship Award and my continued pursuit of education. Although I am unable to attend the meeting, I would like to thank the Burbank Police Department, the Burbank Police Command Staff, and the Burbank Noon Rotary Club. Thank you.
Congratulations again to Officer Burt, and thank you, Chief Albinis and Ms. Blandell for joining us tonight.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
As a reminder to the general members in the audience in our community, actually at home and in the community, if you would like to participate in general public comment, please call right now at 818-238-3335. Mr. City Manager, do you have anything to report to the community this evening?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one item.
Please.
It is my pleasure to introduce Viviana Garçon, our new administrative analyst in the city manager's office. I'm going to have her come out here just so she could get some quality camera time here. She's doing the phones right now, but we're going to have her come out. She could come to the podium. Viviana has been working with the city. She's a new face, but very familiar. She's been working with the city of Burbank for 20 years, primarily in Park and Recreation Department. She graduated from UCLA with a Bachelor's of Arts in Sociology and Public Affairs and from CSUN with a Master's of Public Administration. So as you know, we all miss Christine, who is moving on to the police department, but we are very happy to have Viviana, and she is a very proud resident of the city and truly values our Burbank community.
Ms. Viviana, welcome aboard. You've got five groovy council members that you're going to be working with, and sometimes we go at 100 miles an hour, but we thank you in advance for your commitment as our liaison to the city council, and we do appreciate your time and energy as we move forward and get to know you and build that business relationship with you. Welcome aboard.
Thank you, Mayor Frutos.
Madam City Clerk, I will have to correct myself. Point of order, I failed to call for the roll call this evening. Can you please call roll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Anthony.
Present.
Councilmember Schultz.
Present.
Councilmember Springer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Telemontes.
Present.
Mayor Frutos.
Present.
Thank you.
Moving on to the presentations this evening, joining us tonight to give a federal legislative update are David Church and Jamie Jones from David Church and Associates. Welcome, Mr. Church and Mr. Jones.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Vice Mayor. Greetings directly from Capitol Hill. I was told that I needed to be briefed tonight, and as you know, for me, that's a real challenge, but I'll try to do the best I can. In part, I think it will behoove us to be briefed. I'll have to be up at 4:00 in the morning, my time, 1:00 your time, to visit with one of my other favorite clients, El Dorado County, California. With the Calderon fire, they're having difficulty with FEMA, and I'll be there for the next day or two trying to resolve. In fact, I will resolve those difficulties. I will tell you that where we are in Washington is subject to change about every five minutes. The House theoretically has 26 legislative days before the start of the new year. The start of the new year will then be the second session of this Congress. Bills continue that are introduced from one session to the next and will not expire until noon of January 3rd of 2023. The House currently plans to recess for the year on December 10th. Now, we'll see if that actually happens. The President has signed into law a continuing resolution which continues to fund the government through December 3rd, and the President has also signed an extension of the FAST Act through October 31st. Now, that will be replaced with what you see as the hard infrastructure bill, so hopefully we're going to have that resolved by the end of October. The House has passed nine of the 12 appropriations bills. Remember, they have to do this by midnight of September 30th. Well, it is as it is. That's Washington. And the House has put earmarks, which is important to my favorite city, Burbank, because we've been very successful with earmarks on your behalf. The Senate has passed none of its spending bills, and correspondingly, we don't know if earmarks are going to be included or not, except that earmarks have been included in Senate reports on those bills. The Senate infrastructure package of $1 trillion, this is the successor to the FAST Act now, in new and baseline spending for the next five years for highways, public transit, rail, water, wastewater, infrastructure, and broadband deployment. For $550 billion of that total is new money. The remainder was money that was already authorized. The Senate voted 69 to 30 to pass the bill on August 10th. The Senate bill contained no congressionally-directed spending or earmarks, and the House approved investing, well, they call it investing, in a new vision for the environment and surface transportation in America. Invest, I like the title, by a vote of 221 to 201. Earmarks were included in the House bill. House leadership has decided to take up the Senate-passed legislation and not go to conference. So the House passed a rule on August 24th, setting up a possible vote on that Senate-passed legislation by September 27th, and of course, we didn't meet that one either. The deadline passed as the human infrastructure bill was not ready. We're still debating how big it should be. The progressive wing of the Democratic Party is pretty much insistent that both of the infrastructure bills, what we see as the human infrastructure as well as the hard infrastructure, move in tandem. 13 committees in the House have provided reconciliation reconstruction, that is, the soft bill, to House Budget Committee by the deadline of September 15th, and the Senate Committee is not likely to make any pronouncement in public. The budget resolution measure still has a long way to go, as I say. It's uncertain when the House or the Senate will actually reach a resolution. The $3.5 trillion that was originally requested probably be reduced. We're talking now about $1.9 to $2.1 trillion. The debt limit is probably going to be included in that reconciliation package if Minority Leader, Republican Leader McDonnell, and the Senate Republicans stick to their position at the moment. And again, I want to remind you that the debt limit only involves retroactive expenditures of the government. It funds things we've already committed to pay for. It's not progressive. A $480 billion increase in the debt limit has been adopted by the Senate. The House was to consider it. When I checked earlier this afternoon, they'd not yet considered it, but it is expected to pass. This will extend the government into December, and then there's always the issue, we extend the debt limit, but somehow we can pay bills. And the reason we can do that is because it depends on the receipts the government is taking in through taxes and other things that accrue to them. Now, always, as is my case, if you have any difficult questions, Mr. Jones is here to ask them or answer them, and I will also tell you that with great regret, I've not yet met in person Councilmember Anthony and Schultz. I'm looking forward to that, particularly with the description that was given about you by the mayor. So any questions will await. Mr. Jones, you're on.
Mayor Frutos and members of the council, thank you very much for the opportunity to be with you tonight. David sort of gave you a sort of a bird's eye view of things that are going on in Washington, and with your permission, I'd like to sort of focus in or bore in on some issues that are specific to the city. One of the things that David spoke about were the spending bills and earmarks, or what we call earmarks, but what members of Congress now call community project funding in the House. So you've done, you know, first of all, I'd like to give kudos to your staff. You were given a very constricted period of time to submit your project request to the House and to the Senate. Normally, we have a couple of months, and in this case, because the process was delayed because they didn't know whether or not they were going to move forward with community project funding projects, we basically had to do this in a matter of weeks. And your staff was able to come, put a list of projects with the descriptions and the funding, and we had numerous conversations with your congressional delegation, with the Committee on Appropriations folks. They had a number of last-minute, last-second questions, and your staff was always on call. So I just want to thank you and thank your staff for doing that. Having said that, let me begin by sort of delineating some of the funding that is pending or has been requested on behalf of the city of Burbank by your congressional folks. Representative Adam Schiff has requested $225,000 for a water tender in the fiscal year 22 Interior Environment Appropriations Act. The House passed that bill this summer, and the spending measure is pending in the Senate. While Representative Brad Sherman did not submit funding requests for Burbank under the annual appropriation bills, Sherman and Representative Schiff did ask for funding under the infrastructure bill, the five-year reauthorization process. They both asked for the same projects and the same amount of funding. So in the Invest in America Act, the five-year authorization bill that was adopted by the House on July 1st, which spends nearly $1 trillion on infrastructure. Keep in mind, that is the House version, not the Senate version, the bipartisan Senate version that David spoke about. So Representative Adam Schiff and Brad Sherman each requested $500,000 for the electric vehicle DC fast charging network to expand the installation of electric vehicle charging stations along the I-5 and 134 freeway corridors. The House Transportation and Infrastructure Committee funded the project to the tune of $1 million, adding the funding requests from Schiff and Sherman. Each asked for $500,000 for the project, and the TNI Committee, the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee, combined them and put in $1 million in their bill. Both Schiff and Sherman requested $2 million for the Olive and Magnolia Bridge Safety Barrier Rail Project to modernize barriers and pedestrian railings. The House Transportation and Infrastructure Committee funded the project at that level, and that number, by the way, is included in the House-passed bill. So that's very good news. Senator Dianne Feinstein, under the FY22 Financial Services and General Government Appropriations Act, is requesting $250,000 for Burbank's Enhanced Workforce Training and Economic Recovery Program. The project is targeted at expanding the city's current retraining skills program to a more in-depth program focusing on providing help to people who may have lost jobs during the pandemic. This is the only, this is only one of two projects Senator Feinstein requested under the disappropriations account, the Small Business Administration account. So that's very impressive. I think you guys did a very nice job with that. Senator Alex Padilla, under the FY22 Transportation Housing and Urban Development Appropriations Act, is requesting $500,000 for the city's electric vehicle DC fast charging network. Again, this is an appropriations request. I mentioned that Sherman and Schiff are asking for funding for that same project, but that's in a transportation authorization bill. That's a separate tract. So that's very good news because that puts your project in play in the appropriations process as well as in this infrastructure bill. And so I think, you know, we have some cards to play on that, and I think that bodes well. Padilla also is requesting $2 million for the Olive and Magnolia Bridge Safety Barrier Rail Project. Again, this is on the appropriations side, so that's very good news. And then under the FY22 Interior Environment Appropriations Act, Senator Padilla, like Congressman Schiff, is requesting $225,000 for the water tender project. The city of Burbank is seeking funding to replace your current obsolete water tender with this new apparatus to better serve as a regional asset for urban and wildfire suppression services. Under the FY22 Commerce Justice Science Appropriations Act, another appropriations bill, Senator Padilla is requesting $350,000 for a community policing project, a program to implement community policing best practices, including a partnership with social services outreach personnel to address issues on a case-by-case basis. And then Senator Padilla finally is also requesting $950,000 for Burbank's P-25 Phase 2 radio infrastructure upgrade, a system which is part of the Interagency Communications Interoperability System, providing county-wide mission-critical voice communications to your public safety, utility, and emergency response personnel. So these are all, you know, this is all very positive. The issue regarding the appropriations, as David mentioned, the House has passed nine of the 12 appropriation bills. The Senate has passed none. One of the holding issues, or one of the issues of conflict, there are a number of them, in the Senate is that they haven't agreed on the top-line funding cap. And the other issue is somewhat more problematic, is that the Democrats in the Senate have increased domestic funding or would like to increase domestic funding by 16% for FY22, and only 2% for defense. The Republicans in the Senate find that unacceptable. They would like to see parity in the percentage increase for both domestic and defense programs. There looks to be like there is some kind of, there could be an agreement coming in the next couple of weeks. It looks like Republicans are willing to raise the defense budget at 5%, and I think the Democrats may sign off on that. And that could be an agreement, which would then allow the appropriations process in the Senate to move forward. So we're hopeful that that takes place, because as David mentioned, you know, there are a number of earmarks that have been requested. You have each of your congressional delegation members who have requested earmarks on your behalf, and I think you're very well positioned should Congress move forward with the earmark process. And the good news there is that, you know, we have Patrick Leahy, the chairman of the Appropriations Process Committee in the Senate, who has agreed with Senator Shelby from Alabama, who's the ranking member, that they do want to include earmarks in any final package. And the likelihood is we won't know the final numbers and what projects get funded, probably until December, when Congress hopefully finalizes the FY22 appropriations process. So we're keeping a close eye on that for you. And then finally, I would like to say a few words on Burbank's multi-year effort, along with other ICI system members, to rescind a statutory provision that required the Federal Communications Commission to auction off public safety T-Band by February 2021. T-Band T-Band is what is, what the ICI system, which is what your whole system is based on, operates on. That's the platform. And thanks to the advocacy of the city of Burbank and Burbank Water and Power, along with other ICI system member agencies and public safety stakeholders across the country, including New York City and Boston, we successfully rescinded, through an act of Congress, the T-Band action, auction mandate in December 2020. Had the auction taken place, it would have forced the ICI system and its member agencies, including Burbank, to spend hundreds of millions of dollars to replace a perfectly viable and robust communication system. So, you know, that was really good news. That took a number of years to coalesce, to put a coalition together and to activate it. And your members on the council, you know, were actively engaged in this process over the years. So thank you very much for your participation and your leadership. It paid off, and I think your community is better served for it. So I'm more than happy to answer any questions. If you have really difficult questions, please ask David.
Okay.
No.
Vice Mayor Telemontes, first one up to bat.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Church, Mr. Jones, it's good to see you again. It's always good to see you, not only in person, but on the Zoom platform. You know, I've got a couple of questions in regards to the ask by our representatives. For example, Schiff asked for the 225 for water tender, and that was also asked for by Senator Padilla. And by the way, Senator Padilla and I share the same haircut, same barber for many years, for many years.
That's good to hear. We should leverage that to our advantage.
We've seen him chat. He brings his three boys. He's got three boys. He brings his three boys, he gets haircuts, and every now and then we cross paths. But having said that, so they both asked for 225. Is there a potential that we get both, or are we just going to get one?
Well, Councilmember, that's a good question, sir. You know, I wish you could get both. The question, the reality is that there is a local match of 50%, so you're not going to be able to get more than that, unfortunately. So, but the good news is the fact that you have, you know, Schiff has asked for this money on the House side, and that you have Padilla asking for the same amount of money for the same project in the Senate gives you leverage. So as long as Congress does its job, and that's a big if, you know, we should be in a good position.
So we'll have two bites at the apple, hopefully.
Yes, sir. That's right.
Definitely. So I don't want to be greedy. I'll take one, but if they're going to willing to give us both, so be it.
No, you should be greedy. No, there's nothing wrong with that, in this regard.
That is correct. When it comes to Burbank, we want to be greedy.
Thank you, sir. I agree with you. I've been voicing that. That's been my position for years. Any grants available, I want them to come to Burbank.
That's right.
Now, as far as the electric vehicles, pretty much the same. $500,000 by each. Schiff and Sherman asked for the $500,000 for the electric vehicles, and so has Senator Padilla. Once again, the same situation?
Well, it's a good question, because, and I'm glad you raised that, because it's somewhat tricky, because Schiff and Sherman have asked for that 500, each asked for $500,000. And then the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee Chairman Defazio said, okay, I'm going to put them together, make it $1 million. But he put that, that is not an appropriations request. That is in the, what we call the reauthorization of the FAST Act, or what they call the Investment in America Act, which is what the House passed in July. And so that's in that bill. In the appropriations process, it was Senator Padilla that asked for $500,000. So that's on, that stands on its own, because that's a separate tract. So we'll have to see how that plays, you know. But, but I think you're, you're in a good position. The issue for us on the reauthorization process, Councilman, is that, you know, when the House passed its Investment in America Act, they passed that bill with almost 1,700 earmarks. The Senate never put a call out for projects for what they call, they don't call them community project funding, they call them congressionally designated spending. But it's all the same thing. They're all earmarks. The Senate never put a call out for projects in the reauthorization process, in this transportation bill that, this bipartisan bill that the Senate eventually agreed to by a vote of 69 to 30, and sent it to the House. So in the Senate bill that passed, there are no earmarks in that bill. So what, so essentially, what Chairman Defazio did, said, God, what am I going to do? I got 1,700 earmarks in my bill, but there's nothing in this bill that came from the Senate and is now going to be voted as-is without amending it in the House, which is what David talked about earlier, that's leveraging this infrastructure, bipartisan infrastructure bill with the reconciliation bill. And so what Chairman Defazio did is in the instructions that his committee transmitted to the budget committee to basically create the budget reconciliation bill, he put a provision saying, I, there's a provision that says $6 billion for local transportation projects. That's it. So, and that is basically a backdoor to try and save the earmarks that are in this infrastructure bill, not in the appropriations. So the good news for you and for the city of Burbank is that you guys have not only that in, you know, you have that pending issue, but you also have the appropriations process, which is separate, and you have this request from Senator Padilla. So I think that, you know, I think we have a number of balls in the air, and, you know, the good news is I think we certainly have an opportunity to get more than one project funded for the city.
It sure looks positive. Just one more question. I don't want to take up too much time. A P-25 radio upgrade. As you know, I've been involved with that since I've been on council. And it's, yeah, we can't give any of our highways away like it was proposed to do, right? Sell them off. Once you lose them, you're not going to get them back. So this $950,000 towards that, and I appreciate what you've done to make sure that they don't get rid of those, the freeway lanes.
No, absolutely.
Of our radio, of our radio stuff. So anyway, nice to see you again, Mr. Church, Mr. Jones. It's always good to see you guys. Stay safe, and we'll talk soon. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Springer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Church and Mr. Jones, for your report. I just have a question about the Olive Bridge. I heard it twice. I heard it at about the third or fourth item down, and I neglected to catch all of that. But on the second time, you said $2 million for Olive and Magnolia Bridges, maybe. What was the first one, or could you please tell us about?
Sure. So you've got, so for the Olive and Magnolia Bridges, there are, you have a couple of pending requests. So Adam Schiff and Congressman Sherman, together, basically, each individually submitted request for the, for the, for the Olive and Magnolia Project at $2 million each. Now, and they submitted that to the House Transportation and Infrastructure Committee, which is an authorization committee, and for the infrastructure bill. And they, so what they did is, the committee, instead of combining them, saying, oh my God, we have two congressmen, they each asked for $2 million, let's make it $4 million. They said, no, no, we're not going to do that because there are some local match issues regarding 80/20. So you can have 80% federal and 20% state. But, so the issue for us is that, on, for Sherman and Schiff's request, they have $2 million, and that's the request that went into the Invest in America Act bill that was passed in July. But that's an authorization infrastructure bill separately and distinctly. Senator Padilla has asked for $2 million for the same project, but in the appropriations process for fiscal year 2022. So that is a pending request because, as David mentioned, the Senate has not, has only marked up three of their 12 appropriation bills to fund the federal government for FY2022, which began on October 1st. And like anything else, Congress is behind schedule. It is usually traditional that Congress gets its act together right before the holiday season in December, because all these members want to go home, and they don't want to be stuck in Washington dealing with the crisis or crises. So you have these two pending requests. They are for the same project, but they're in different vehicles and different, you know. So one is an appropriations bill that will be considered in April, and the other one is going to be, and, well, we hope that if Chairman Defazio's provision, backdoor provision, $6 billion provision, is included in the budget reconciliation package that the House eventually considers this year, that that will give us an opportunity to go to the Department of Transportation and seek that funding. But there are no guarantees at the moment. So hopefully I didn't confuse you more. Hopefully that gave you an idea of what's happening.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz, you have the mic, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Church, Mr. Jones, really nice to meet you. Thank you for the thorough presentation. Look forward to working with you. And I just have one question. Appreciated everything that the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Springer asked, but one thing that you said that piqued my interest is the ongoing conversation in DC about both the short-term fix in place for the debt ceiling, as well as the continuing resolution to fund the federal government through December 3rd. My question is, for everyone who's watching at home, what's the practical implication if a longer-term fix isn't reached? How might that affect the city of Burbank after December 3rd?
If you're talking about the debt limit itself, there's no immediate, the December 3rd won't trigger a default of federal expenditures to meet their obligations. Then it becomes kind of variable in how much money do, it's almost a cash flow problem. That might be the easiest way to explain it. How much money do we take in every day in tax and other receipts as opposed to how much money we pay out? And that's why Yellen, we don't want to say she cooks the books, but because this is how we do things in Washington, she has the authority to continue to pay bills while the federal government has the money to meet those payments. And that can be a couple of hours, a couple of days, a couple of weeks. It is probably not a couple of months. And again, you've heard, those of you who've been on the council for a while, have heard me talk about that extensively. This is retroactive. That is, it pays the bills that have already been incurred, not prospective for expenditures we might make into the future. So it's entirely independent from the appropriations process or the authorization process for either of the two infrastructure bills.
Just to add, Councilman Schultz, just to add to that, you know, Majority Leader, Senate Majority Leader Schumer is calling the Senate GOP position dine and dash, where you basically use your credit card, well, you don't use your credit card, you go to a restaurant, you eat and then leave before paying. And he's saying, essentially what David said is that basically all these, you know, the fact that we were about to hit, you know, we actually hit the debt ceiling in July, and then Secretary of Treasury Janet Yellen used extraordinary measures to keep us afloat and notified in writing to the House and Senate that we were about, that she was about to run out of the ability to use extraordinary measures by October 18th, which is why you see the House moving today to pass this, to raise the debt ceiling to December 3rd. And to go to your point regarding the continuing resolution, I mean, obviously, back to the debt, just quickly, you know, if we default on the good faith and credit of the United States, there are economists that say that that would be calamitous, that interest rates overnight would go up, for everything from mortgages to car, to your car loans, to everything that we use, for business loans, everything would go up dramatically. Even the, even the, you know, the interest rate on the national debt would go up enormously with no return, with no, nothing more to gain. So it would be really quite, and then some of the other economists are saying that this would trigger a recession, and that millions, billions of Americans would go unemployed. Now, on the, on the continuing resolution, that funds basically the federal government. It funds what they call the discretionary part of the federal government, about $1.5, $1.6 trillion out of the $4.5 trillion budget. And that's what most Americans think of as their federal government. That's what funds, funds the bells and whistles, you know, the Department of Justice, the FBI, the border protection, you know, all these other programs that are not mandatory spending programs. And if we do not fund those, if the continuing resolution, for whatever reason, is not extended past December 3rd, you know, parts of the federal government will shut down, and that will have an impact on the ability of people to collect certain benefits. The park services will close, or a number of other services will shutter down as well. And it really has, you know, it's very dysfunctional to agencies when that happens.
Thank you very much.
And I might just add that Jamie focused really on the effect to Americans, but because worldwide commerce is, to a great extent, conducted in dollars, it will trigger a huge impact globally, not just in America.
Thank you both. Really appreciate it.
Councilmember Anthony, your thoughts? You have the mic.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Church and Mr. Jones, for your presentation. I'm, you know, I'm a big follower of modern monetary theory or MMT. Is there discussion happening at all in Congress of eliminating the debt ceiling completely or possibly, and this comes around every time the ceiling gets hit, minting that trillion-dollar coin?
Yes. Well, David, I'm more than happy to jump in. Janet Yellen, answer your question.
Exactly. The answer is no. There's no serious discussion.
Okay. So, but Janet Yellen has, I mean, you know, I don't think the Republicans are interested in allowing this, this leverage that they have to go by the wayside. I think that there are, Janet, Secretary Janet Yellen has supported, is supporting, you know, getting rid of having to do the national, raising the debt on a, you know, multi-year basis. And I think we're only one of the few developed countries that actually do this. Nancy Pelosi, Speaker Pelosi, has also voiced support for getting rid of it as well. You know, this is something that ostensibly is not in the Constitution. It was implemented at the turn of the century, back in the early 1900s. So, so if Congress so chooses, they could do that. But I think that the Republicans would be reluctant to do away with that type of leverage, at least as long as they're in the minority.
Right, right. I mean, you know.
I just don't see that as anything that's in the realm of possibility, at least in this environment. And Councilman Anthony, you sound like a fellow economist. Boy, I'm anxious to meet you.
Well, look, you know, as our own fiat currency issuer, we're no longer on the gold standard. We haven't been for over 50 years. So, I mean, you know, it's just numbers on paper at this point. So I'm interested, you know, I'm interested to see what Secretary Yellen's solution would be, if it automatically rises, or if it's, it rises based on certain triggers that happen in the economy. I'd like to see that. Because, yeah, it's not in the Constitution. We invented these limits ourselves, so.
Exactly right.
All right, last, but I got some different questions out of different topics. So, Mr. Jones, I guess you were the one that's supposed to get the tough questions.
Oh, God, please don't say that.
Absolutely.
But this one, I will direct to Mr. Church, since he's got his own airplane and he flies.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
So this goes first to him. Is there an update regarding the FAA and NextGen and all the individual cities that have filed basically lawsuits and injunctions? They want studies done. Is there any update at the federal level that you can bring us up to date with that?
You know, I've not, although we represent a lot of airports and interested communities surrounding those facilities around the US, I haven't checked on that for a while. Give me a day or two, I'll look at it and I'll get back to you.
Okay. And then I have a follow-up question, since you're the aviation expert here. Nighttime curfew for the Burbank Airport, what do you think? Should our Should our congressman pursue that? Is there enough votes in the next session? What are your thoughts?
That's really an FAA prerogative, and it's been an issue kind of across the board, where generally, the resolution has been the community working out something satisfactory with the, with the FAA. I do know at Burbank, the last time I took a look at that, air carriers, the Part 139 operations, were pretty accommodating in terms of hours at least, when they'd fly, not fly, decibel levels, whatever. And it was part of the Part 91 or 121 operations that really affected the noise that you have, if you will, in the middle of the night or for the off-hours. That's a little more difficult to deal with, but for the most part, those curfews have been worked out between the communities and the FAA.
Okay. Now, this goes for Mr. Jones. I keep following the conversation regarding a national mileage tax. What are your thoughts on that? Is this something they're going to tackle on the next session or still a couple of years? Where are we at with that, in your thoughts?
Well, I'm glad you answered. Yeah, go ahead, David. I'll ask David, then I can put my two cents in.
This has been, this has been an issue going back at least to, I would say, 15 years in which as a part of our successor of infrastructure bills, we have studied the whole issue of mileage as opposed, we know the gas tax doesn't pay for what we need to improve our road structure. And we've looked for alternatives. There's resistance to mileage, but there is hardly a vehicle on the road today that does not already have the ability to monitor mileage. So if you went to a gas pump, it can tell you how many miles you drove since last time, and that can be included directly at the gas pump with almost no modification. All that technology is there today, and we've been looking at it on a federal level for at least 15 years. It becomes more and more an issue when you have, for instance, electric vehicles that are on the road, using the roads, but basically not participating in the gas tax of any kind. Now, Jamie, you probably have a better explanation.
I'm never going to disagree with, with the boss, so, but I will say this, that Chairman DeFazio of the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee has looked at the VMT and has, and I think is, is interested in supporting it. I think the committee is interested in this, but they want to, the chairman, according to the chairman, that the country is not yet ready to fully implement a VMT in this authorization process that we're talking about in the infrastructure bill. But it's certainly something that Congress is looking at very closely. You know, as you well know, the fuel tax hasn't, federal fuel tax hasn't increased since 1993. It's lost a third of its buying power. And it's just unsustainable. It's not, you know, the federal treasury, we have to dip into the federal treasury every year in order to bail out the Highway Trust Fund.
Wow. Okay. Well, Mr. City Manager or Madam City Attorney, any questions for our legislator lobbyists there in our nation's capital before I continue?
Mr. Mayor, I do not. I just want to thank both Jamie Jones and David Church for doing their annual update. It's always fun and entertaining and informative, and we will be working with, staff will be working with them to get all those Burbank funds, so thank you.
Well, I do have something for both of you, and it'll be mailed to you. So next time I come to Washington DC, I always appreciate you guys opening doors of congressional halls for me, so I can lobby on behalf of the people of Burbank. But on behalf of the entire City Council, I have for both of you a certificate of acknowledgement from the city of Burbank that I want to see hung in your, in your office there when I come and visit with you again. But I'll just read David's real quick, because he's the boss. David Church, "The city of Burbank appreciates your longtime, successful efforts in providing the city with federal advocacy services and effective representation in Washington DC. David Church and Associates has done an impressive job for Burbank by bringing needed funds and federal money to the city through various grants. You've represented Burbank in a wide range of issues, including transportation, infrastructure, law enforcement, and homeland security. Your staff is made up of professionals committed to integrity and quality professional services. On behalf of the entire Burbank City Council, we thank you for your constant and diligent work, and we wish you and David Church and Associates continued success on behalf of the City Council." Now, show that to the mayor from Alcent, Alcentro, they had dinner with that one night in DC, because Burbank will be in the office. But, thank you.
Thank you so very much. Thank you so very much, and we look forward to a continuing relationship. It's been one that's absolutely excellent. And with the city manager was talking about informative and humorous, I hope that I was part of informative and Mr. Jones was humorous.
I think, I think you met that goal. And don't forget, Mr. Jones, I'm still waiting on my bucket list.
Oh, I know that. I knew you were going to raise that. We're working on it. I am still working on it.
Okay, well, thank, thank you so, so much for informing the council. And I know that when you get to meet my two newest colleagues, when they go to Washington DC, they're going to walk away with the same impression I did on the first time of how fortunate we are that you guys literally, you know, prepare our agenda and you open doors and get us ready to meet with these congressional people as we, you know, pitch, pitch our, our issues on behalf of the people of Burbank. Thank you so much for helping us out and for being there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night, gentlemen. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Madam City Attorney, will you please advise the community of what was reported on closed session this evening, ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the community watching and staff. Council did meet earlier this afternoon in closed session. The first item was public employee appointment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957. Title of the position is City Attorney/Interim City Attorney. The second one was conference with labor negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. The agency negotiator with mayor and vice mayor concerning the city attorney/interim city attorney position. The third item, conference with labor, with legal counsel on existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 Subsection D1, McCall versus City of Burbank, a civil rights case. And lastly, labor negotiations again, under Government Code Section 54957.6, city's negotiator, the management services director concerning, there's a list, so give me a second. Representing the, representing unrepresented employees as follows: Burbank City Employees' Association, Burbank Management Association, International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Burbank Firefighters International Association of Firefighters Local 778, Burbank Firefighters' Chief Officers' Unit, Burbank Police Officers' Association, Unrepresented Managers, Z Group, Executive City Attorney and City Manager. That's all there is, thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Ms. Mullins, do we have any caller, oh, correction. Now is a time for general public comment. Members of the public may address the council for up to three minutes on any matter concerning city business. Remember to please lower the volume on your TV or computer, and please take your phone off speaker when you deliver your public comment. To participate, please call right now at 818-238-3335. Ms. Mullins, do we have any callers on the line for public comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do, and we're ready to go.
Beam them down, Scotty, beam them down.
Hey, thank you.
Our first caller is Jesse.
Good evening, welcome.
Hello, thank you for having me. First time caller, a little nervous, I'm not used to doing this stuff. My call is regarding the vaccine mandate. I don't know the status of it, but I just wanted to say my piece. Sorry, I just ran in the house, so I'm out of breath. So, I'm not an anti-vaxxer. My family and I have all, we all have the traditional time-tested vaccines. And conspiracy theories aside, I just don't trust the vaccines. Their, their development, their testing, and the rollout was all rushed. There isn't enough good data, in my opinion, and the data we have raises concerns. Breakthrough cases are rising, the vaccinated, or people that are vaccinated can carry it and spread it still. Multiple other countries are already giving booster shots because the vaccine doesn't last. There's many, many documented cases of adverse side effects. So in my opinion, these vaccines just aren't good yet. If we wanted to get a vaccine, we would have done it already. You know, there's, there's no, you know, they're readily available, so if I wanted one, or speaking on behalf of others that aren't vaccinated, we just, we just don't want it. So mandating it wouldn't change our minds. The bottom line is, we're, we're all adults here, morally and ethically, you know, it's, it's not, you know, you guys don't have the right to force, you know, the rest of us to get a shot that we don't want. If others want to get vaccinated and also wear a mask while driving alone in their car, so be it, you know, leave them alone, leave us alone. And if, if money is your thing, paying for testing is going to be a lot cheaper than having to lose trained, highly skilled workers. I myself work in the line section, and, you know, it's a four-year apprenticeship. I know the water department has three-year apprenticeships. So to replace us, you're losing that training, but you're also having to hire somebody and then retrain them. So it's a, you know, I don't know what the cost of testing is, but I guarantee the, the cost of losing and employing and having to replace and train, you're going to be money out and years behind the curve of productivity. And also, you know, with, if, if you force the vaccine and some people will reluctantly get it to save their jobs, will the city accept liability for any adverse medical reactions? So that's another concern. And I'll, I'll close with this, this quote, I'm not sure the source, but it speaks to me, at least. And it goes, "At no point in history have the people forcing others into compliance been the good guys." So, and I'm not saying you guys are necessarily forcing yet, I don't know what the status is, but like, think about that for a minute, like, if you're being forced, it's usually not good. So that's, that's my piece, and I appreciate you guys listening for what it's worth, you know, I appreciate that, and thank you guys for your time.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Cindy Mark.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. Again, my name is Cindy Mark. I'm the General Manager of Anagram International, one of the largest balloon manufacturers in the world. We sell to large retailers, as well as mom and pop shops, some of which are in Burbank. I'm expressing opposition to proposed alterations to Chapter 1, Article 9, Section 4-1-902 of the Burbank Municipal Code, specifically the provision relating to the ban on the sale of metallic balloons filled with helium or lighter-than-air gas. Anagram Balloons inspires joy, and we're committed to doing so in a responsible and sustainable way. We pledge to continue our significant investments in product development to better our environmental and infrastructure stewardship. Anagram is collaborating with elected leaders, utilities, and standards associations in California to advance innovation in the balloon industry globally. You'll find online links that verify these points in a letter I submitted to the council earlier today. First, Anagram is employing the most cutting-edge technologies to create the best balloons for consumers and the environment. Second, since 2016, Anagram has collaborated with SEBRA and San Diego Gas and Electric on non-conductive balloon technology, that is now moving towards test standard development within the IEEE Standards Association, the group that develops global standards in industries including power and energy. Even with pandemic challenges, we will, we will reach a non-conductive standard ahead of schedule. Third, Assembly Member Cork authored Assembly Bill 847, similar to the proposal in Burbank that would introduce regulations for metallic balloons to meet the IEEE standard by 2026. SDG and E and the Balloon Council are engaging the California Municipal Utilities Association on this bill. After discussions with the Assembly Member earlier this year on innovation, he agreed to hold the bill and create a new timeline to provide clear expectations and guidance for our industry. Fourth, our goal remains to revolutionize the industry by innovating new infrastructure friendly technologies such as non-conductive film for metallic balloons. We welcome BWP as a partner to observe the IEEE testing process in the development of non-conductive technology. In July, Anagram and SDG and E completed an agreement for licensing this balloon technology for widespread use. Anagram supports legislation limiting the intentional release of balloons, offers a comprehensive education program on responsible balloon usage for customers, and is piloting ways to recycle balloons to further keep them out of infrastructure. In conclusion, we respectfully ask the following: Do not move forward with a ban on the sale of metallic balloons filled with helium. Please provide the industry time to scale this promising non-conductive technology. Lastly, please reach out with questions to our collaborator and fellow IEEE member, Mr. Stephen T. Johnson, SDG and E Advanced Clean Technology Innovation Manager. His contact info is available in the letter I submitted to the council earlier today, along with links to public references to our work together. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Sean Allen.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you for having me. As a Burbank Water and Power employee, I strongly urge you to reconsider implementing a COVID-19 vaccination mandate policy.
Can you please speak a little bit louder? One of our councilmembers cannot hear you. Madam City Clerk, can we please restart the clock? Thank you. Please, we're restarting your three minutes, just speak louder. Thank you.
Okay.
Please go ahead. Yes, much better, thank you.
As a Burbank Water and Power employee, I strongly urge you to reconsider implementing a COVID-19 vaccination mandate policy. I believe in the freedom of choice and bodily autonomy, and a vaccine mandate would violate my right to make personal healthcare decisions. My medical choices are private and should not be a condition of my employment. I do not believe that force is the answer to keep our city and our employees safe. I believe that a vaccine mandate would create division among employees and be the cause of a hostile work environment. I believe that a vaccine mandate would drive skilled workers and experienced employees to leave. A vaccine mandate is the wrong choice for all well-being of BWP. Please take into consideration that a large majority of our staff, despite vaccination status, believe in freedom of choice, and a vaccine mandate would negatively impact the work we do at BWP. Thank you.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Okay, thank you.
Our next caller is anonymous.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, City Council, how are you today? I am calling on behalf of a family member who is a city employee, and we would like to both remain anonymous for fear of retribution. And I am reading her statements directly as she wrote them. Quote, "I strongly oppose a citywide vaccine mandate for all city employees, and I say you consider weekly testing alternatives and/or consult city staff about their preferences regarding this mandate. Not once have we been contacted by anyone about this proposed mandate, which I find extremely disrespectful and appalling. I understand that most like you, I understand that most likely your decision is already made, but I ask that you hear the concerns of the silent majority. I am not anti-vaccine, I am anti-mandate. I've been a proud worker at this city, but I am now stuck between a rock and a hard place, faced between an ultimatum forcing me to decide between keeping my job or going jobless. Those of us who cannot get the vaccine are not ready, or simply do not want to, will soon be forced out of our jobs, our schools, and shunned from society. The majority of those with reservations against the COVID vaccine are minority groups. What message are you sending to them about where they fall on the class's toting pole? This is more than just about the COVID vaccine. This is tyrannical, gross, overreached by our political leaders, preventing to be concerned about my health. If the political class is so concerned about the virus, why are you maskless at indoor events? Why are you hosting events with hundreds of people while your council meetings are still virtual? Where is your advocacy for healthier diets? Weight loss, intakes of vitamins, exercise, and other activities can improve their immune system for the virus. Instead, we're being dictated by politicians about what is best for us and our health. Health is personal, and how I choose to go about dealing with my body is my personal choice. You are not responsible for deciding what's the best for my body. And it is unbelievable to me that I am living in a time that everything I worked so hard for, my job, my life, my livelihood, is now being dangled in face like a carrot. Your job against the virus is simply this, to provide the resources, ensure that Your job against the virus is simply this: to provide the resources, ensure that most vulnerable are taken care of, and allow the rest of the able-bodied population to make their own decisions. My respects to those who have been vaccinated. You are doing what's right for you, to protect yourself against the vaccine. And I am doing what is right for me. I am willing to take my chances against a virus with a ninety-eight to ninety-nine percent chance survival rate. Thank you for your time. And now, since I have some time remaining, I want to ask if any council members have any questions that I can answer for them.
Sorry, we're not allowed under the public comment period?
And how much time, how much time do I still have remaining?
Fifteen seconds.
Fifteen seconds, okay. Well, I hope you all decide to do the correct thing and, um, just be on the right side of history on this one. Don't, don't be a tyrannical regime who's going to force people to be jobless in face of a crisis of where we have short.
Thank you very much for your call. Your time is over. Next caller, please.
Thank you.
The next caller is Christine Petrosian.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Frutos and members of the City Council. I just wanted to let you guys know that I do oppose the decision for the citywide vaccination mandate, and I believe that the decision should be voluntary. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
The next caller is anonymous.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. Does my, uh, time begin now?
Yes, sir, please, you have three minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Esteemed council members, I wanted to take this opportunity to address you all and my concerns over the COVID-19 vaccine mandate. My statement is simple: people must have autonomy over their own healthcare. Every individual is born with the God-given right to security over their person and should have control over what does or does not go into their body. There have been over six thousand deaths and six hundred thousand adverse events reported to the VAERS system for the COVID-19 vaccines. However, even if those numbers did not exist, it is antithetical to the very essence of freedom to coerce people by way of barring them from participation in society, to put something into their body that they do not want, especially a substance that has known side effects, including Guillain-Barre syndrome, myocarditis, anaphylaxis, stroke, and seizures, just to name a few, and for which there is no legal recourse, as vaccine manufacturers are protected against lawsuits in cases of vaccine injury. Furthermore, I do not believe we can vaccinate our way out of this pandemic, as the vaccine cannot prevent transmission. According to Rochelle Walensky, Control Director for the CDC, quote, "Our vaccines are working exceptionally, exceptionally well. They continue to work well with Delta with regard to severe illness and death, but what they can't do anymore is prevent transmission," end quote. It is my understanding that the goal of the vaccine mandate is to put an end to the pandemic, which is indeed a noble goal, but as the CDC has acknowledged, the vaccine cannot stop transmission. The unvaccinated have weighed the pros and cons of taking what is still a very experimental vaccine and have decided on what they believe is the best choice for them. And that's what makes this country great: freedom of choice. By charging blindly into a state of authoritarianism, we will be eternally dooming ourselves to a life of strict obedience to the edicts of the executive branch and biotechnology corporations. This is effectively a vaccine passport, banning a human being from public life and its tantamount to a social credit score. Obey or be excised from society. We are standing at the precipice of a deep pit, a pit of tyranny and authoritarianism, and should we willingly jump into that pit, it is unlikely we will, we will ever be able to climb out of it again. What happens next is either a descent into a state of permanent medical tyranny or we stand up as a society and defend our God-given right to choose. I beseech you all to allow for the continuation of medical freedom and personal choice. I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Ryan.
Good evening, welcome. Good evening, welcome.
I apologize, I was on mute. Um, good evening, Mayor and council members. Uh, my name is Ryan Elaine and I'm a City Member of the California Retailers Association. Uh, Citywide Trade Association, its members include all aspects of the retail industry. Um, I'm speaking today on the proposed ordinance to ban the sale of metallic balloons filled with helium or lighter-than-air gas. Uh, CRA has already submitted a letter to city staff and the council as well, so I might as well actually breathe. Uh, first, I would like to thank Vice Mayor Talamontes and Councilmember Schultz for including us in discussions on this issue and hearing from our experts in developing balloon technology. Uh, tonight, we are respectfully asking the council for some consideration of the proposed balloon ban. However, uh, if this issue does go forward tonight, we will continue to work in good faith with the council and interested stakeholders to find a workable solution. I did want to mention that CRA is, uh, currently working on this issue at a statewide level. Uh, since early this year, uh, there is a bill in the state legislature, AB Eight Forty-Seven by Assemblymember Cork, that would phase out electric, electrically conductive foil balloons sold and manufactured in California as this new technology soon becomes available. We understand the importance of this issue with the residents of Burbank, uh, but because there is a workable statewide solution in the process, uh, this is why I respectfully ask the council to block tonight. Uh, but thank you for listening to our concerns, and I hope you all have a good evening.
Thank you very much for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Hazmik.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Frutos and council members. My name is Hazmik Vertaneshian. I'd like to begin by thanking each of you for your service and commitment to our community. I have a role to serve on Burbank Housing Corporation or the community goals. I'd like to share a quote by Brene Brown. "The courage to be vulnerable is not about winning or losing. It is about the courage to show up when you can't predict or control the outcome." I have been a Burbank resident for over twenty-three years. I have raised my three children here. While they were growing up, I mostly was involved with the school PTA and volunteered at school events to be part of their loss. In the past five years, as they graduate and move on to college, I have been more involved in our city and always look for opportunities to do and give back to the community. I've always been driven by sense of service, sense of duty to something more than just myself. My serving on a commission or a board will enable me to do my part and serve my community along with other talented individuals. As none of us is as strong as all of us. I am passionate about many causes that our community is facing currently, but especially homelessness and affordable housing. I have been a homeowner, a landlord as well as a tenant, so I have experienced all different aspects of housing. Currently, our, we are facing housing crisis with the shortage of available housing as well as cost of rent. And due to COVID and unemployment, these issues have increased and have caused historically high number of homelessness. Now is the time for all of us to come together, city leaders, board members, and community members, to address these issues and develop strategies that will help the most vulnerable in our community. I'm passionate to be part of that movement in serving my community on a board or a commission. I thank you for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your call. Next caller, please.
Okay, thank you.
Our next caller is Ruth Martinez-Baynen.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, uh, Mayor Frutos, Vice Mayor Talamontes, and members of the Burbank City Council. Um, as she said, my name is Ruth Martinez-Baynen, and I have applied to, uh, serve on the Burbank Housing Corporation. Um, and just for those who don't know, I've served for many years, and I find that, um, this is a really critical part of our community that we're able to provide affordable housing in our community. Not a lot of cities are able to do it. Uh, I've been a very proud passboard member of the Burbank Housing Corporation for many years, and I have, I feel I have the experience and the knowledge to continue to face our challenges that are, are looming us with higher costs of real estate, higher costs of construction, and trying to come up with creative solutions to continue to provide affordable housing. And I just calling to, uh, seek your support, uh, for this appointment. Thanks so much for your time and have a great evening.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Tamala Takahashi.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Frutos, Vice Mayor Talamontes, and council members. My name is Tamala Takahashi, and I'm a twenty-two-year resident of Burbank. I'm calling tonight regarding the last two items on the agenda: the vaccines for city staff and contractors. I understand that this is a complicated issue, as we are witness to with the previous callers. I imagine that you also received many email communications on this item. However, one thing is absolutely not a complicated issue, and that's a focus and high priority for the health and safety of our residents. This is an issue that I have not heard mentioned yet tonight, and I wanted to take this opportunity to highlight its importance. There are some staff and some contractors who interact with the public on a regular basis, often in emergency situations and other situations where, as a resident, there are situations where we have no choice but to interact with these individuals in close proximity. It is the responsibility of the city to ensure the safety and health of our residents by making sure that we are not being exposed to COVID by city employees. There's no way to know if an EMT or police officer or public works employee or counterstaff is vaccinated. As you know, vaccinations are the only way that we can be assured that an individual is at the lowest risk possible of having and spreading COVID. A non-immunized individual has a significantly higher chance of having COVID, and if they are ill with COVID, to have a high viral load and then spreading it to others, even if they show no symptoms. And while a testing option is better than nothing, it still provides a window where an unvaccinated individual can contract and carry the virus without symptoms after being tested. Being okay with city staff putting our residents at risk by interacting with us while not being vaccinated, in my view, is the antithesis of being concerned with our health and safety. My hope is that tonight, while this is a difficult conversation to have, that you take advantage of this leadership opportunity and assure that our community is safe and that we have the absolutely minimum exposure to COVID as possible, and that the most vulnerable in our city who need city services and all of our residents are taken care of by, um, by, uh, adopting a policy that guarantees, that guarantees that all city workers who interact with us as residents are vaccinated. And if there is a situation where a city worker is not vaccinated, that they are not in a position to interact with the community. Thank you for your time and consideration, and have a great rest of your meeting.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is anonymous.
Good evening, welcome.
Hello, good evening. Hello, I'm a Burbank Water Employee, Water and Power Employee, and I just wanted to talk about the COVID-19 vaccine mandate policy that they're implementing. I believe it's our freedom of choice whether we want to take the vaccine or not. I'm not an anti-vaccine personnel, I'm just, uh, anti-mandate, um, person. I do not believe that people should be forced to take the vaccine if they don't want to. I myself have taken the vaccine, I just don't believe others should be forced to do so if they do not feel they should want to. And, um, as my o- other fellow public commentator stated, Jesse, um, we will move years of experience and, uh, great guys to this. I know, uh, a couple of my fellow employees who are ready and willing to, to leave, and that is years of experience, money, and time the city of Burbank has put into these personnel that they are just losing. I don't believe it's good for the city of Burbank, and I don't believe it's good for Water and Power. Uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Garrett Rowland.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Council. Uh, my name is Garrett Rowland. I work for Burbank Water and Power. I sent an email to each one on council about a week ago regarding the vaccine mandate, and, uh, I requested a reply, but the only one I got replied from was Councilman Anthony, that did not address anything I actually stated in my email. So I decided I'll read the email to you guys tonight. Little about myself, I dedicated a decade of service to the community of Burbank. More importantly, during the pandemic, the last two years, I came to work every single day in person with a newborn daughter at home. During the early months of the pandemic, restrictions gone from fifteen days to slow the spread to now over five hundred days later, and we continue to experience government overreach in ways that are unlawful to our freedom and liberties. I choose not to receive the vaccine for personal reasons, but now my career is at risk for being unvaccinated, and my possible termination lies in the hands of the Burbank City Council. From the number of council meetings I have watched and have called in on, it seems the purpose of these mandates is to protect employees and the public from the unvaccinated, transmitting the virus to them, yet have not heard nor seen any data that would validate this mandate. The main argument is the other cities have done so, and the city has the authority to do so, which is such a baseless authoritative misuse of power. But since the city council has yet to provide data to support this mandate, I will share some facts that I found. According to the director of the CDC, the vaccine will not prevent transmission. According to, uh, the CDC's VAERS, the Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System, there have been seventy-five hundred deaths in two thousand twenty-one alone from vaccines, which is a four thousand percent increase any over any other single year in the last thirty-two years. There have been nine thousand live threatening reactions caused by vaccines in two thousand twenty-one, which accounts for over half of all reported cases in thirty-one years. I'm going to skip through more of these stats because I'm trying to get to other things. Now, this is strictly from the FDA regarding the Pfizer vaccine. The direction, uh, duration of protection against COVID-19 is currently unknown. Serious and unexpected side effects may occur. The possible side effects of the vaccine are still being studied in clinical trials. This is dated September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one. The significant known and potential risks and the benefits of the Pfizer COVID-19 vaccine in extent in which such risks and benefits are currently unknown. And more importantly, under the UEA, UAA, it's your choice to receive or not receive the vaccine. Should you not decide to receive it, you will not change your standing for medical care, according to Moderna, dated August twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one. The Moderna vaccine has not undergone the same type of review as the FDA approved or cleared product. The Moderna vaccine is an unapproved vaccine. It's still in a clinical trial. The duration of protection is currently unknown. Is, once again, is your choice to receive it or not?
Thank, thank you very much for your call. Your three minutes are over. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Candace.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, my name is Candace. I'm a lifetime Burbank resident and a third-generation city employee that has been serving this community for almost twenty years now. I care deeply about this city and the work that I do here. However, I feel that that is now in jeopardy with your vaccine mandate that you'll be discussing later this evening. It is very saddening that you're considering no longer giving a choice to the essential workers that you have counted on to work through all of the uncertainty of the last year and a half. Mandating this vaccine is unethical. It is currently causing a great deal of individuals' injury and in some cases, death, and these adverse reactions are happening right out of the gate. There have been no long-term studies on what this will do to the human body. Since these billion-dollar organizations who created the vaccine are not liable, will the city then take responsibility when I have an adverse reaction and can no longer physically or mentally care for myself or my family? Or how about ten, twenty, thirty years from now when I have a severe, long-term effect? Will you be paying my medical bills and my long-term care? To be honest, I'm completely confused as to why this is even up for discussion. Being vaccinated does not, I repeat, does not prevent you from contracting or transmitting COVID to others. But there is no clear benefit to being vaccinated. So my question to you is, then, why are you choosing to force individuals who do not believe that a vaccine is right for them and their bodies to get it? City of Burbank employees care so deeply for all of the citizens, and we put everything that we have into the services we provide. Sadly, I fear that you will lose a great deal of these caring and dedicated employees if you force this on us. We are the backbone of this community, and you should have, we should have a say as to what goes into our bodies, whether that is a vaccine or even a weekly test. If you don't own your own body, then you do not live in a free society. My private medical decisions should remain private. My health is my responsibility, not yours.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Okay, thank you.
Our next caller is Candace.
Good evening, welcome.
Hello, thank you so much for taking my call. Um, I am calling in support of the vaccine mandate for employees. As a parent of a, a child who cannot be vaccinated and a daughter of a man with stage-four lung cancer, I hope the city will do whatever is possible to make sure our residents are safe. I hope the city will do whatever is possible to make sure our residents are safe and not exposed to unvaccinated city staff. Unlike the information related in earlier calls, data shows that fully vaccinated persons are less likely to acquire COVID and therefore less likely to pass it on to others. Frankly, it's not about your own personal health choice when your choice affects your community. And no one is coming to your door and jabbing a needle in your arm. So to say you are forced is complete hyperbole. City Council, I implore you to make the same difficult decision as BOSB Board of Education. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Mr. Mayor, I was just informed there's no more callers in the queue, so it's safe to go ahead and close our communication.
Okay, with that information, there be no more callers on the line for public comment. I now declare the public comment period closed. Now is a time for a brief response from city council, city manager, and/or the city attorney. Who would like to start first? Councilmember Schultz, you have the mic, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank everyone for calling in. Because the comments pertain to agenda items, I'll be reserving any response until we get to them. Thank you again.
Thank you, Councilmember Schultz. Any other council member wish to make... Councilmember Springer.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the callers, and I'll reserve my comments when we reach that agenda item. Thank you.
Councilmember Anthony.
Yeah, I want to thank the callers calling in for the appointment today. We had a lot of great applicants, and we'll get to that agenda item later. I also want to thank Ms. Takahashi for calling in with some very salient comments. Thank you.
Anybody else? Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too would like to thank everyone for calling in and sharing your concerns and ideas with us. It's always helpful to get ideas from the community. So a lot of these comments will be discussed during the agenda items. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
I also want to thank all the callers for calling in and expressing their points of view, and I will hold any more comments till the item comes up. But to the one caller that emailed and only received response from one council member, probably the reason why you didn't hear from anybody else is because of the open meeting law. That becomes a serial meeting, so we're really restricted by state law and the open meeting process that we could not all five respond back. But at least one council member responded. But on behalf of the entire city council, I'm sure we all read your email, because I did, and I'm sure my colleagues did. But we are not allowed all to respond back as this was an agendized item coming to the council, and that would be considered a serial meeting, which violates the open meeting law. Thank you for understanding. Moving on to the consent calendar. It may be enacted by one motion. Mrs. Mullins, may I please ask you to read the consent calendar for this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Consent calendar. Item number one is introduction of an ordinance prohibiting the sale of Mylar balloons in the City of Burbank. Item number two is housing minutes, approval for the minutes for the joint meeting of August 24, 2021. Item three, approval of fiscal year 2122 budget amendment for community services building security project. Item four, appointment of members to the youth board for the 2122 school year. And item five, adoption of resolution for design building contract with Musco Support Lighting for Ball Field Lighting modernization project at the George I. Z. Ball Field Valley Skate Park. And that concludes the five items on the consent calendar.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Oh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If I may, I'd actually like to pull item one for discussion at the end of the meeting.
Okay, Madam City Manager, item one goes to the end of the meeting. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I'd just like to pull item number four just for a comment.
Okay, item four for just a comment. Go ahead, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. And this is appointment of members to the youth board for 2122 school year. And I just want to make sure that we voice, re-engage the community members that are not going to be appointed. There's going to be several appointments that are made by the schools and some at-large appointments. We had more than enough applicants to submit it for the seven open, at-large appointments. I'm sorry, I'm forgetting what I'm saying. But anyway, I just want to mention to the youth, stay engaged, don't give up. You know, there's other appointments along the way. So the people that did not get appointed, please stay tuned to further for some other appointments in the future. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
We need a...
Oh, thank you.
Councilmember Schultz, and I need a second. Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Schultz, and we have a second by Councilmember Springer. Madam City Clerk, let's call for the vote.
All right, Councilmember Schultz.
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Springer.
Yes.
Councilmember Anthony.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Talamontes.
Yes.
And Mayor Futo.
Yes.
Thank you.
We have five reports to counsel this evening and one consent item at the end. The first report is for an appointment to fill one vacancy on the Burbank Housing Corporation Board of Directors for a full two-year term. Ms. Mullins, can you please present the report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this opening occurred on September 1st. The city clerk's office began advertising and accepting applications for the vacancy on the Housing Corporation Board of Directors for a two-year term. The vacancy schedule is a scheduled vacancy for board member Ruth Martinez-Benin. She served as a representative on the board, and her term is up October 31st of this year. In order to obtain qualified candidate, a notice was posted at the city website, the city council meeting announcement, social media platform, and also press releases to LA Times, Burbank Leader, and my Burbank.com. Notices also were posted at City Hall Bulletin Board, the Burbank Channel during city council meetings, and through community groups and organizations. The deadline to submit applications to the city clerk's office was on September 30th at 5:00 PM. And the city clerk's office received three applications. The first one is Ruth Martinez-Benin, which is an incumbent. The second one is Munza Ayaz, and then Hazmik Vartasian. The applications are listed in the order that was received at this point. If the council does not have any questions for me, I'm happy to start the vote.
I see none. Please start the vote.
Thank you. So I'm going to read the names, and then we'll go back and take the vote. Ruth Martinez-Benin, Munza Ayaz, and then Hazmik Vartasian. The vote right now is for Ruth Martinez-Benin. Okay, I got five votes. Congratulations, Ms. Martinez. All right, so moving on to our second report.
The second report is for an appointment to fill one vacancy on the Community Development Goals Committee for an unexpired term. Mrs. Mullins, the mic is yours.
Thank you. So we did have the advertisement started on September 1st, and this was an advertisement to accept applications for the vacancy on Community Development Goals for an unexpired term ending July 31, 2022. This was created by the resignation of member Abby... Oh my God, I can't even pronounce this name, by Yisauvi, I apologize, who moved out of the City of Burbank. And again, in order to obtain qualified candidates, we posted it on the City of Burbank website. The notice went to City Hall Bulletin Board, through social media, LA Times, and the Leader, and Burbank.com, and community groups and organizations. The deadline to submit the application was Thursday, September 30th at 5:00 PM. And we did receive 10 applications. So I'm going to read the names. Nat Hashim, Charles Cordray, Lauren Kristen, Rose Johnson, Andrew Magalene, Aram Arkalian, Liron Devier, and Munza Ayaz, Tyler Greenlot, and Hazmik Vartasian. If council doesn't have any questions for me, I'm happy to start the vote.
I see none. Please start the vote.
Let me get my sheet here. Okay, the first one is Nat Hashim. That will be none. Charles Cordray, none. Lori Kristen, none. Rose Johnson, no. Andrew Magalene, no. Aram Arkalian, none. Liron Devier, one. Munza Ayaz, one. Tyler Greenlot, none. And Hazmik Vartasian. I have one, two, three. Congratulations, Ms. Vartasian. She's been appointed. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Our third report is a renewal agreement for the acquisition of capacity and a renewal transmission service contract with Southern California Public Power Authority as they relate to the Southern Transmission System. Mr. Scott Mellon, Acting Power Supply Manager, please present this report to the council.
Thank you, council. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm glad you can hear me. That's good, thank you. Yes, I'm presenting on the Southern Transmission System Renewal Project Agreements. Scott Mellon, Burbank Water and Power, Power Resource Manager. So I am here to request that the city council and authorize the general manager of BWP to execute the renewal agreement for the acquisition of capacity, the renewal transmission service contract, and such ancillary documents, including certificates, letters, and notices to implement these agreements with the Southern California Public Power Authority as it relates to the Southern Transmission System. These documents, collectively referred to as the STS Renewal Agreements, assign BWP's rights on the STS to SCAPPA, establish monthly payments for BWP's share of the STS to SCAPPA, and allow SCAPPA to initiate the process to issue new bonds and other debt obligations for the STS Renewal Project, ensuring continued reliable transmission of energy from IPP and other renewable energy projects in the area to the Burbank Electric System during the term of the Renewal Power Sales Contract, which begins in 2027. This slide is a rough representation of the multiple energy resources related to the transmissions we are discussing tonight. The particular section that these agreements relate to is between the IPP bus, located in Utah, and the Adelantos Substation in California, more commonly referred to as the Southern Transmission System or the STS. The slide shows the critical role that the STS plays in bringing Milford wind energy and IPP energy into Burbank today. There are also other renewable resources in this region: geothermal, solar plus storage, wind, that BWP is considering acquiring in the very near future. In June of 2015, Burbank City Council approved a set of documents which renewed Burbank's participation in the gas repowering of IPP. These documents included a renewal power sales contract with Intermountain Power Agency, who are the owners of IPP. That renewal power sales contract allows Burbank to purchase electric power from IPP for a period of 50 years, beginning June 2027 and continuing through June 2077. Bringing this purchased electric power from IPP into California and ultimately into the Burbank Electric System, BWP utilizes its preradic interest in the STS. Although the majority of the original construction of IPP was financed through IPA, the original California purchasers of IPP, which include the City of Burbank, financed the original construction of the STS through the Southern California Public Power Authority, or SCAPPA. SCAPPA is a nonprofit joint power agency, which the City of Burbank, the City of Glendale, and Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, along with many other municipal entities, are members. On May 1, 1983, the city council entered the City of Burbank into an agreement for the acquisition of capacity and a transmission service contract, collectively referred to as the STS Original Agreements, with SCAPPA to allow for the issuance of more economically favorable bonds and other debt obligations by SCAPPA for the construction of the original STS. These STS Original Agreements are effective through June 15, 2027. The anticipated date when the last of the debt repayment for the original bonds and other debt obligations issued by SCAPPA will be satisfied for the original California purchasers of IPP. In alignment with the long-term nature of the IPP renewal documents, IPA recognized the need for capital improvements to extend the life of the STS, including the replacement, renewal, and expansion of converter stations, alternating current switchyards, reactive power equipment, and associated facilities of the STS, which are nearing the end of their useful lives and pose potential reliability concerns. The STS and related STS Renewal Project will increasingly be utilized, not only for the transmission of IPP generation, but also to serve as a critical transmission asset for the delivery of renewable energy and sources utilizing IPP's location as a renewable energy hub in order to meet California's renewable energy mandates. Assisting with the original STS construction and financing, California renewal purchasers associated with the IPP Renewal Project, that being Burbank, Glendale, and LA DWP, have elected to finance the STS Renewal Project through SCAPPA. As such, BWP seeks to enter into the STS Renewal Agreements as a necessary step towards the issuance of new bonds and other debt obligations by SCAPPA for the STS Renewal Project to provide for the continued reliable transmission of energy from IPP to the Burbank Electric System during the term of the renewal during the term of the Renewal Power Sales Contract. Excuse me. The STS Renewal Agreements will be effective until June 15, 2077, where up to some later dates is necessary to meet all bond and debt obligations or to provide for adequate provisions for such payments by Burbank and/or Glendale and/or LA DWP. SCAPPA is the preferred method to finance the bonds since SCAPPA is able to issue tax-exempt municipal bonds and incur other evidence of indebtedness at lower yields than issuing bonds through IPA. LA DWP's Financial Services Organization, in coordination with its independent municipal advisors, conducted a market research and financial analysis and have determined that issuing bonds through a joint power agency like SCAPPA could result in a total net debt service, which includes principal and interest, savings of approximately $28.9 million for the California renewal purchasers over the life of the project. The projected savings are based on the higher credit ratings anticipated for a SCAPPA STS Renewal Project issuance versus financing with IPA and the pricing advantage, generally lower yields, of tax-exempt California municipal bonds compared to most other states owing to California's relatively higher income tax rates. If these agreements are not approved, IPA would seek to issue the bonds to finance the capital improvement. Since the cost of a more expensive IPA financing would be recovered through STS charges, it would result in a higher cost for the Burbank ratepayers. This slide presents two different ways of looking at the same BWP financial obligation. Total construction cost for the STS Renewal Project is currently estimated at approximately $1 billion. Total cost of bonds and other debt obligations issued to finance the payments in aid of construction to IPA is estimated at approximately $2 billion, including principal and interest over a 30-year term. Burbank's share of the STS Renewal Project is 4.222%. So our total financial obligation would be... So our total financial obligation would be approximately $84 million over the 30-year term. For a yearly perspective, the average annual debt service over the term of the bonds and other debt obligations for the STS project is expected to be about $63.3 million, of which Burbank's share would be approximately $2.7 million annually. In conclusion, BWP Board and staff recommend that the city council approve and authorize the general manager of BWP as designated the city manager to execute the STS Renewal Agreements between SCAPA and the city of Burbank. Thank you for your time this evening. And welcome for questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Council members, who would like to lead the discussion? Anybody? Going once? Going twice? Somebody's got to... Councilmember Springer, lead the, lead the conversation.
Yes, thank you very much for the presentation. Was the, the, did the board vote unanimously on, on this?
Yes, they did.
And so what is the cost to us now? I mean, it's anticipated to be projected to be $2.7 million annually, right?
Right. Yes, that would be starting in the 2027 timeframe.
So what, how much does it cost us now annually?
No, that's a good question. I don't know that right off the top of my head for a current project, because those are existing bonds.
I was just curious. It's... To see, that's, that's all I have, Mayor Frutos.
Thank you, Councilmember Springer. Any other council member wish to weigh in? Councilmember Nick Schultz, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, staff. I think the mayor is going to appreciate this. I have no questions, because I thought the report was exceptionally well put together. It addressed everything. So I just wanted to say bravo, BWP staff, and I am supportive of the recommendation.
Wow, I'm surprised. Outstanding. Councilmember Anthony.
I've said it before, I'll say it again, the transmission lines, that's the way of the future. How we, how we get them, how we obtain them, and how we keep them under contract. Everything that's coming, solar power, wind generation, hydroelectric, it's all coming down the same transmission pipes, right? Those lines are not going to change. So, yes, please, let's, let's get this going and, and, and get our, get our, claim our stake, so to speak.
Thank you, Councilmember Anthony. Vice Mayor? Okay, two thumbs up. I will be also supporting this. Before COVID-19, I did spend some time with our utility, our former director, to really learn about our, you know, basically our transmission lines that support geothermal, solar, and storage, which is what the Burbank Sustainable Commission is always discussing at their meetings, is on their liaison, also with Councilmember Schultz. We talk about wind power from Milford, Utah, and obviously IPP and the transition from, you know, a coal-fired plant to moving on to natural gas and exploring other avenues. And Hoover Dam, which is our hydroelectric, even though right now I'm kind of worried because of the water shortage, but I'm sure the good Lord will bless us with some hopefully good rain, and we can continue. But the bottom line is, at least for the residents that are watching which way the council's voting on this, those transmissions lines are critical. And since we are part of SCAPA, the investment that we're putting in gives us the reliable renewable energy that we on the council unitedly are in agreement to make this a, a more sustainable type of power coming into our residents. So with that said, Madam City Clerk, let's call the vote and move this on.
Mr. Mayor, I think we need a motion.
Oh, Doug Gunnit, you guys caught me off guard. Nick, I mean, Councilmember Schultz, make the motion.
Yes, I move to adopt the staff recommendation.
And we have a second by Vice Mayor. Thank you so much, Councilmember Schultz, for bringing back to the protocol. Now, Madam City Clerk, please call for that vote.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Telemontes?
Yes.
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Springer?
Yes.
Mayor Frutos?
Yes, motion carries five all. Thank you, Water and Power Staff, and Ms. Lindell, thank you. Okay, our fourth report is the consideration of a city of Burbank COVID-19 employee vaccination policy. Ms. Betsy McClintock, welcome to our meeting. She is our Management Services Department Director. May you please present the report to the council.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. Again, Betsy McClintock with the Management Services Department. So tonight I'm here to provide information to the city council regarding a potential city of Burbank COVID-19 employee vaccination policy. After considering the information presented this evening, staff requests direction from the city council regarding the adoption of such a policy. Or alternatively, staff recommends that the city council allow full implementation of the city council adopted COVID-19 employee testing policy and time to evaluate its effectiveness before considering a vaccination mandate. As a reminder, the city council adopted a city of Burbank COVID-19 employee testing policy on September 14th. The adopted policy included a vaccination mandate for all newly hired city employees. The new hire mandate has been implemented and was effective for all candidates who received an offer of employment from the city on or after September 27th. Additionally, staff has been working diligently to implement the employee testing policy. Staff met with several testing vendors, narrowed the field down to two, and is in contract negotiations. We've also been working closely with our information technology partners to identify a software platform to digitally receive and track proofs of vaccinations from all of our employees, so that the management services staff does not have to receive and process 1,400 hard copied proofs by hand. The platform will also allow us to track and schedule testing. We are currently in contract negotiations with a selected software vendor, and the goal is to have the software platform implemented by the end of the month and to begin testing in November. All of the city's labor groups have indicated their support of the employee testing policy. So in order to facilitate the council's discussion regarding a potential employee vaccination policy, staff has provided a draft city of Burbank COVID-19 vaccination policy along with several additional forms. The draft policy does the following. First, it requires all employees to provide proof of vaccination as determined condition of employment by a date to be determined through the meet and confer process with the city's labor groups. The proposed target date for the implementation is January 1st, 2022. Second, the draft policy includes boards, commission, and committee members in the vaccination mandate. Boards, commissions, and committee members who fail to comply with the policy would be brought to the city council during a meeting, so that the council may take action as appropriate. Number three, it requires testing and face masks for employees granted a medical or religious exemption. These requirements would exist independently from the city's mask and face covering policy. And four, finally, the draft policy provides a process and forms for employees to request medical or religious exemptions to the vaccination requirement. So I'd like to spend the remainder of the presentation providing information that may be useful to the council as they consider whether to direct staff to move forward with an employee vaccination mandate. The items I'd like to touch on include, one, religious exemptions, two, meet and confer considerations, three, the Los Angeles County Vaccination Mandate for Emergency Services Providers, four, staff retention considerations, and five, finally, some new information about the cost of testing that has occurred since the report was finalized last week. The first item I'd like to discuss is religious exemptions. Federal guidance is clear that employers must provide accommodations from vaccine mandates for employees who have sincere religious beliefs that are in conflict with getting a COVID-19 vaccine. It's important to understand that federal law defines religious belief very broadly, to include moral or ethical beliefs as to what is right and wrong, which are sincerely held, beliefs which do not belong to any specific religion, and even religious beliefs that contradict a religion's stated doctrine. Federal guidance is also clear that an employer should assume employees are sincere in their expressed religious beliefs. Public agencies that have implemented vaccination mandates have taken a variety of approaches to religious exemptions. Some cities have taken a very aggressive approach, asking employees many questions designed to ascertain the employee sincerity or the nature of the religious belief. If the council chooses to pursue an employee vaccination mandate, staff recommends that the council take a more legally defensible approach and simply ask employees to certify that they have a religious belief that prevents them from getting vaccinated. Given the federal definition of religious belief, as well as the federal guidance that employers should assume employees are sincere in their expressed religious beliefs, staff believes it would be difficult for the city to defend a determination that an employee did not meet the requirements for a religious exemption. The second item I want to touch on are meet and confer considerations. As I have discussed with the council previously, there is a Public Employment Relations Board decision which appears to indicate that the council may decide to mandate employee vaccinations without negotiating the decision, but that any effects on employees from the decision are certainly subject to meet and confer. Effects on employees from a vaccination mandate that would be subject to bargaining could include, but aren't necessarily limited to, one, the timing of implementation and enforcement. For example, how long would employees have in order to get into compliance with the policy? Number two, disciplinary consequences for noncompliance. For example, would noncompliance automatically lead to termination? And finally, number three, what the process and forms for medical and religious exemptions would look like? For example, what questions would be asked on a religious exemption form? Prior to implementing any vaccination mandate, the city must fully complete the bargaining process on effects, including declaring impasse and moving through fact-finding prior to imposing if the city is unable to come to agreement with a labor group. I also want to note that the city labor groups have been supportive of the council adopted employee testing policy. The city has a long history of positive labor relations that may be impacted by the adoption of an employee vaccination mandate. The labor groups have universally indicated their opposition to an employee vaccination mandate. The third item I would like to discuss is the Los Angeles County Vaccination Mandate for Emergency Services Providers. On August 12th, the county issued this order, which applies to all of our fire sworn personnel. These employees were required to receive their vaccinations by September 30th. The order was clear on the requirements these employees needed to meet to receive a religious exemption. Specifically, employees needed to state that they were declining vaccination based on religious beliefs. Because the fire sworn employees have already been through the vaccination mandate process, and some have already been given religious exemptions under the county order, staff recommends the council adopt a religious exemption form that contains a self-certification to be in alignment with the process the fire sworn employees have already gone through. If the council adopts a more stringent religious exemption form, it will trigger an additional meet and confer requirement with the Burbank Firefighters Association. The fourth item I want to touch on are concerns regarding staff retention. Burbank Water and Power has certain critical areas with lower vaccination rates, specifically electrical distribution, electrical equipment and testing, the power supply center, power production, and water maintenance and construction. These employees are highly trained, highly desirable employees who are easily mobile and in demand by investor-owned utilities and private contractors, who do not appear to be mandating vaccinations. Over a four-year apprentice program, the city invests over $1 million in training costs for these employees. BWP believes that the potential for these employees to leave due to a vaccination mandate is real because of the ease with which they can find work elsewhere, and potential impacts to BWP services are significant. The replacement costs and four-year training program means replacing these employees will be expensive and take time. The final item I'd like to touch on is the cost related to the council's adopted employee testing policy. There's been a recent development, just last Friday, that I want to add to the information contained in your report. SB 510, SB 510, was signed by the governor and appears to require that medical insurance carriers pay for the cost of employer-mandated screening testing. If this ends up being the case, it may significantly reduce the cost of testing to the city. Additionally, staff will pursue any reimbursement for testing through the Federal Emergency Management Agency. The city cannot require employees to pay for employer-mandated testing under the California Labor Code. This concludes the information that I wish to share with the council. I'm happy to answer any questions the council has. Staff recommends that the council provide direction regarding the adoption of a city of Burbank COVID-19 employee vaccination policy. Or alternatively, staff recommends that the city council allow for full implementation of the council adopted COVID-19 employee testing policy and time to evaluate its effectiveness before considering an employee vaccination mandate. Thank you, members of the council, very much.
Thank you, Ms. McClintock. Vice Mayor, may I call on you first, since you kind of originated this agenda item, and you can lead us into discussion?
Well, then happy to. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, well, it's, it's stated in the report, obviously, and it's, thank you, Ms. McClintock, for the report. It's very clear and it's concise. It's going to be up to the council which way we want to go. Obviously, we've had a lot of emails with pro and con, one way or the other. And this came about from just the protection of, of public safety. This is a, you know, and it's been, it's been discussed at length, not only here in Burbank, countywide, but nationwide. So it's nothing new. We're not on the cutting edge of anything. And the other thing, we're just following the surge of what to do. What's the best way to proceed when you start talking about public safety? Public safety of our employees and public safety of our residents. So I want to hear the discussion from my colleagues and see where we're, we're going to be headed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Schultz, I'd like to have you weigh in. What are your thoughts?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I share my brief comment, I actually did have one question for staff. So I'm looking at page nine out of 10 of the staff reports. The first paragraph on that page, and at the, the bottom of that paragraph, there was a note that in the electrical distribution, electrical equipment and testing, power supply center, power production, and water maintenance and construction sections, that there was a higher rate, if you will, of unvaccinated employees. I just wanted to ask, so that 43% is an average among all of those sections, right?
That's correct. It's all of those sections collectively, yes.
I, I don't know if you have the data in front of you, but is, I mean, are there sections that have, like, specific sections? For example, electrical distribution that might have an even higher rate than 43% of unvaccinated employees?
So I, I have that information. I can look really quickly to see if there are lower vaccination rates. I am, want to be cautious about getting any more granular than what I've provided in the staff report, because some of those sections are pretty small. And I think that those employees are potentially easily identifiable. But I can look really quickly to see if any of, if there, any numbers specifically pop out at me.
Sure.
If I could interrupt, Mr. Mayor, because it's such a small number,
and we could possibly be violating some HIPAA here.
I think for our purposes, just statistically, lumping those together would be fine. Mr. Schultz, are you okay not going into those specifics?
Well, you know, it's perfectly fine for purposes of the discussion. I, I think, I don't think that it's a violation of HIPAA. But I think the point is very well taken. So let me just get to my brief comment, and I'd like to hear from the rest of council. On September 14th, I gave a pretty lengthy statement articulating my position. And for, for the public's information, I would just like to note that on Thursday, October 7th, I had a meeting with Marco Jimenez from IBW, representing our employees at Burbank Water and Power. Earlier today, I had a meeting with the president of the Burbank City Employees Association. And I bring that up to say that I took that opportunity to hear their concerns, to articulate my position. And I want to say that I had a great conversation in both instances. And for the employees that are watching, your representatives went to bat for you and fought for your interest. With all of that said, I have kept an open mind. I have looked at the data. I have done my homework. And suffice it to say, my position remains the same. I do support an employee, employee mandate in the city of Burbank. However, I will note, and Ms. McClintock, excellent, excellent report, by the way. We talk about, we use the word mandate. There are always going to be well-established by law, medical and religious exemptions. So employees do still have a choice. With that said, Mr. Mayor, I have nothing further to add. With that said, Mr. Mayor, I have nothing further to add to the conversation. I would much rather hear from the remainder of my colleagues.
Okay, Councilmember Anthony, why don't you take it from there? See what your thoughts are, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I've taken a long journey on this. I was not, I was not looking to really see this at the beginning. But I've spent a lot of time talking to folks, both vaccinated and unvaccinated. A lot of people in the healthcare field. I got this poster from my union, SCIU 2015 Home Healthcare Workers. And, you know, Ms. Takahashi, when she called in earlier, made a very excellent point about viral load and about what the vaccine does in conjunction with a greater response to it by the masses, right? And we're not talking about individual people getting vaccines, but we're talking about statistical data across thousands and thousands of people. Especially when you talk about the size of the city, you know, we're over 100,000 people here, people coming. I mean, the city doubles in size every day. And once we take that into consideration, the benefit of a vaccine far outweighs its negative implications, right? Knowing that that's true, and then looking at what happened with the county, how they've already mandated our own firefighters to have the vaccine as a condition of employment, we are now in a city with, for lack of a better term, segregated employees. We have a certain subset of our employees who are already under a mandate. And so for me to sit here and say, you know what? Our firefighters can handle it. None of them were laid off. None of them quit. They all did what they needed to do. They got their medical or religious exemptions, and they went about their day, and they took it in stride. To think that there is some other group in our city that is going to have a difference of opinion or a change of heart so drastically than what our firefighters have already done, people who are committed to working for the city, I think it would do a disservice to that group. So I will have to say that, yeah, I would like to see some account of this requirement moving forward because, I mean, it's just, it's in the interest of public safety. That is our job. We are the guardians and stewards of this city, and we are elected to keep the public's interest.
Thank you. Councilmember Springer, your thoughts?
Thank you, Ms. McClintock, for your report. I have a question about, have the mandates and especially the religious exemption, have they resulted in a higher vaccination rate? Of, I know that you've surveyed and you've spoken with lots of other municipalities.
Councilmember Springer, I do have some information related to that. For the City of Pasadena, I believe that their firefighters had about a 17% rate of some sort of exemption. For the City of Glendale, I think it was about a 16% rate of exemptions. And for our firefighters, it was a 22% rate of exemptions, of some sort of medical or religious exemption. And actually, most of those, the over 90% for all of the agencies were religious exemptions. So there is some universe of data there to show that.
Okay, so with a religious exemption, could just about anything goes for that? This is the way I understand it, that it has to be interpreted broadly?
So it does have to be interpreted broadly. What the guidance from the EEOC is that employers should assume that employees are sincere in their religious belief. And at the federal level, the way the commission has defined religion through various pieces of case law that have defined it, it basically says that it's not just religious beliefs, it's strongly-held moral and ethical beliefs. It's a religious belief that doesn't necessarily, is not necessarily part of any particular religion. It could be a religious belief that doesn't comport with what your religion, what your religious religion's doctrine is, right? It could be any of those things. And to get into the heart of somebody's sincerity, to have the city evaluate that if an employee is sincere in their belief, I think that becomes very, in my opinion, that becomes very difficult to do. And I think it would be very difficult to articulate why somebody's expressed belief doesn't fall into one of those categories within the definition at the federal level. Again, it's not necessarily even a religious belief, it's just a strongly-held belief about what is right or wrong.
So the 27%, we're 73% vaccinated now. And so the 27% who are unvaccinated could very well be exempt for religious reasons or morally-held reasons.
Possibly. I can't speculate as to the reason why those employees have either not disclosed to us or have chosen not to get vaccinated. We have not done any work, you know, beyond what was required for the firefighters to find out why employees are not vaccinated. It is likely some percentage of those would request religious or medical exemptions, but without doing the work to get that paperwork from them, we don't have a way to know that.
And what does staff do now? I know that, you know, we adopted a vaccination or testing policy, and labor accepts that. And so I know that I've heard, you know, their temperatures are taken, you know, if somebody's sick, you know, they're, they stay home.
Yes.
I mean, they have sick leave, sick pay, right? So they can stay home and take care of themselves if they are ill.
Yes.
And, you know, I was just, on the BWP, the 43% who are unvaccinated, do they even, do those people mix with the general public? I know I had an electrical problem at my house, and somebody had to come and turn something off. And so they just came and turned it off and left. And then when we were done, we just called them and they came and turned it back on. And they didn't, I didn't need to interact with them. So like, for example, electrical distribution, electrical equipment and testing, power supply center, power production, and water maintenance and construction, do they mix with our general population?
Generally, I do not believe that they do. Power production, that those are going to be the folks that work in our power plants. Electrical distribution are going to be like line mechanics who are working on our power distribution system, the energy control center, those are all, you know, those are not employees that are face-to-face with the public.
Okay, and a question I have that has been, you know, I have, I am fully vaccinated. I support vaccinations. And, but I do have friends, and we've gotten emails from a lot of people who oppose them, but the reasons, I asked my colleagues, what would you say to a young woman who is concerned about her fertility? She's of childbearing age, and she wants to decline because she is concerned it will affect her fertility. So what about her?
Go ahead, Councilmember Konstantin.
Yeah, I can respond to that. I mean, it's a known fact that if you contract COVID and you are hospitalized, there are far more adverse effects than fertility. I mean, there is permanent heart and lung damage and possibly death. I mean, we know that we are not in a pandemic of the vaccinated. We're in a pandemic of the unvaccinated at this point. What the vaccine does is create an immune response in your body to protect you from a killer disease, something that is not just destroying people's lives, but hurting them for years to come. I mean, there's permanent damage is what's happening to these people. You know, I'm watching reports after reports coming in, not just from the United States, all over the world, of people begging for the vaccine literally on their deathbed, and doctors telling them, no, you needed to get the vaccine before you got sick. And that's the last words that they say to their loved ones, is I wish I would have gotten vaccinated, and then they're gone. So, you know, there's always going to be fear and skepticism about any sort of medical issue whatsoever. But the facts are the facts, and this vaccine is super-safe and prevents you from dying.
But you're a man. You're not that young woman who's concerned about her fertility. And we don't know, really. And so you're going to make that decision for her? And also, I have friends who have friends who had strokes after the vaccine. And whether it was caused by the vaccine, nobody knows. But, so some people are afraid. And that is true, that your chance of a stroke is increased if you get COVID. So, but it's their choice. Do they want their stroke now or later? So I feel like we should keep what we voted on, you know, with our vaccination or testing. Because, for example, you know, at three-quarters of a million dollars, that's $2,000. If, you know, there are 371 people who are not vaccinated. And if we test them, and if, if we also have the option available for them side-by-side with testing, if you'd like, here, we're ready to give you the vaccine if you're tired of testing, then that's $2,000 each of those employees. And if we lose those employees, like in the report, it says if we lose one of these apprentice apprentices, the cost to train them was a million dollars. And there are utilities that are waiting for them with open arms. And if we can achieve the same goal of herd immunity, of community safety and staff safety with vaccination and testing, why would we not do that? Why would we not preserve the goodwill that we have with our staff? And they're 73% vaccinated. And I know it's not possible at this point to know what percent results in herd immunity, but I was reading-
95, 95%.
Well, I read something today that was 75 to 80%. Nobody knows. With polio, they achieved it with 80%.
Polio took a generation with 80%. Most CDC guidelines provide 95% as the minimum cutoff for herd, for immediate herd immunity. And I got to be honest, you know, we're talking about personal choice and people getting strokes and losing their fertility. I'm not talking about a single individual losing their fertility or having a stroke. I'm talking about them passing that to somebody else, a member of the public who has no option if they want to do certain things in the city. If they dial 911, they can't choose who comes to their door. If they want to go to the planning office and get a permit to construct something, they don't get to choose which city employee comes to them. So there are certain services in this city that a general public person doesn't have an option for. So we are creating a system where they're gambling with their lives, especially if that person can't get vaccinated, if they are immunocompromised, if they're unable to do so. If they have young ones at home who haven't been vaccinated yet, and they get the disease and bring it home. So, I mean, I'm trying to talk in a larger, general community sense. There's always going to be the individual issue. That's true. But we have to think about public safety.
Right. I'm thinking about public safety, and I think we're achieving that goal with vaccination and testing, and having their temperatures taken, wearing masks indoors. And we're actually, the people, my friends who I've chosen to not be vaccinated, they're very careful about how they manage their health. They don't go to a Dodger game. They wouldn't be able to get in, I don't think. But they don't go to a crowded restaurant and even eat outside. So some of that is personal responsibility to make your own decisions. And I have taken care of an immunocompromised person, and that person was not allowed to go outside. And I had to be very careful. I mean, he was not allowed to be in public, and I had to be careful about what I did to keep that person safe. And so I, I feel like we need to give what we're doing, you know, what we passed, the vaccination and testing, because we don't have major outbreaks. We've managed it well. We're at 73%. A lot can be done online, you know, permits. I don't know, maybe somebody can update us there. I know a lot of that has moved online. And so that's where I am. I think that the cost-benefit is we can achieve the same goal with vaccination and testing instead of vaccination mandate and people losing their jobs and not being able to buy groceries or pay their housing costs. So that's where I am. And like I said, I think about that young woman, and I think about the older person who is afraid of a stroke. And, you know, they've taken it upon themselves to manage their health. And I don't, I don't, I'm vaccinated. I disagree with them. But I respect, I respect what their fears and what they think.
But we're not forcing those people to get the vaccine with this. This is, this is just as an option of employment for us. Like Ms. McClintock said, if they don't want to do this, they can get a job somewhere else. But I will warn everybody, just like the example with the Dodger Stadium, more and more places are requiring the vaccine. I mean, we're talking about private, you know, water and power and electrical utilities. They don't have requirements, we say, yet, because they might. I mean, we took a policy just a couple of weeks ago that all new hires had to be vaccinated. There's no reason that by the time an employee from our water and power says, hey, we're going to go somewhere else, they show up and they say, oh, new hires must be vaccinated. That's just the way everything is moving, the federal, the county level, the state level, private businesses, private enterprise, nonprofits, everyone is moving toward that system.
Right. But they're not losing their job. They just don't go to the Dodger game. They don't get on the cruise ship. You know, they don't go into the restaurant. You're not, they're not being threatened by losing their job.
And that's- What I'm saying is, everyone is doing it. So sooner or later-
It doesn't make it right. It doesn't make it right just because everybody is doing it. I mean, I think about the young woman who is concerned about her fertility. She does not have a health exemption. She could make up, I mean, a religious exemption, but that doesn't increase vaccinations. It just forces it underground.
Well, I mean, Ms. McClintock said that our, we had 22% of our fire given exemptions. That means 78% of them are vaccinated. Is that correct, Ms. McClintock?
That's correct.
78%. That's 5% above the average of our overall city employee. That's a 5% increase. If 5% across the city increase, I mean, 78 is way above the 43% for all of the electrical and power supply and power production, but that's almost double. So if that's, if that percentage creates some sort of safety net, prevents even one person from going to the hospital, I can't see how we can justify saying no to this. I mean-
Councilmembers, I think you guys are going-
I'm just going to finish up.
Okay, let's move on.
I'm just going to say that I support what we have in place, vaccination or testing. And we haven't even given that a chance. And we don't, and I think one thing we need to ask ourselves, what's our goal? Is our goal, I mean, our goal is public safety, right? And I happen to think that we can fulfill that goal with vaccination or testing, what we've already passed. I'm finished. Thank you, Mayor Fudos.
Okay, I'm gonna let you guys know where I'm at, and then hopefully we can move this discussion and take an action. So I abstained the last time because there's still not enough information and it's still changing. But I'm willing to vote this evening. Here's my thoughts. So the governor signed into law that the insurance companies will have to pay for some or all of the testing. But he wouldn't sign a mandated law- to require every single state of California employee to be vaccinated. That never came out and he refuses to do that. So there, there's an issue there that I'm having. He's relying on the county and the cities to tackle this on. But the reality is, and everybody's got great points tonight. I'm not here to 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 say anything negatives, but the bottom line is it's enough for the governor to sign insurance companies to pay for testing, but he's not willing as the governor of the state of California to say, hey, every single employee shall be vaccinated or every municipal and state employee should be vaccinated. That has never come out. So that still is an issue. Um, with our city, we have seventy-three percent that are vaccinated. I cannot take the approach to require mandated shots in arms. And Councilmember Anthony, you were the first one when this agenda item, you said publicly, hey, I don't believe in requiring people to have shots in arms, but I do agree we need to test. We need to do something and that I agree with you. But to me, just as one council member here, I do not feel comfortable in giving an employee of our city an ultimatum that if you don't get vaccinated, we're going to terminate your employment. These were the same employees that during COVID nineteen, whether they're the cops handling calls for service or the firefighters or our park and recreation folks delivering hot meals to our seniors. These were the same employees day in and day out that helped keep the city running. Our utility workers kept the lights on. And for us to pass a a mandate, shots in arms, and if they just say no, we're just gonna fire them? A tenured employee? Ah, I don't think that's fair. Um, the way we're going as a county, the county is still different than the city of Los Angeles. The city of Los Angeles has gone to the point now that if you go to any bar, any restaurant, you gotta bring your card showing that you've been vaccinated. So if our employees on their off time want to go to the Dodger game or to the football game, then they're gonna have to be mandated. But I can support what's on the uh staff report to mandate testing and evaluate this and see where we go in the future. If it doesn't work, then great, let's talk about it. But as of right now, I can vote for and support the agenda item in front of us. But we have to think about the employees that during COVID nineteen and when their age group wasn't there getting shots, they still came to work. The trash was picked up every day. And let me tell you, we've all been affected and we're all scared. I know I am, I'll be the first one to tell you. I've got my two shots, I got Moderna. Heck, I just got my flu shot. I was over at Nickelodeon last week, working on my state of the city address for next week. I had to go to Mend and get COVID nineteen tested just to be allowed to go to Nickelodeon. So there's always mechanisms in there that I wish the council could help me come up with a better policy that if an employee doesn't want the shots, they shouldn't lose their job. And to me, that's important. Because our city employees deserve that type of respect. Because, you know what? They've been here for the community with COVID nineteen. And if you can support, you know, heroes pay, then I know you can support coming up with a better shots in the arm policy that's fair, but won't cost an employee their job. Councilmember Schultz.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, appreciate your comments. Um, a couple of things I just wanted to address. First of all, I I think it's incredibly important that we all exercise, as elected officials sitting on the, well, the virtual dais tonight, that we convey accurate information, um, not anecdotal information, but fact and science-based uh data and information. The first point I'd like to make, uh, Mr. Mayor is, um, you know, you're absolutely right. In this instance, the governor is deferring to local control and I I would love to see more of that in other contexts, but that's all I'll say to avoid uh a Brown Act issue. Um, you know, second of all, you know, to Councilmember Springer's question, here's what I would say to a uh to a young woman who has concerns about getting the COVID nineteen vaccine. Don't talk to me about it, talk to a medical professional. None of us are qualified right here, right now to talk about, uh, you know, what what is medically in your best interest. But here's what I can say. We need to be straightforward with the public. We're not talking about sitting someone down in a chair and and forcibly injecting something in their arm. The policy that's being proposed specifically attachment four, five and six to the staff report, if that were to be adopted, uh, would say that in this case, you would continue to have a choice. Um, if you decided that you didn't want the vaccine, it wasn't in your best interest, you could choose to go consult with a medical professional and see if there is a medical reason not to seek it. Um, regardless of that, you could independently say, I have a religious exemption. And by the way, Ms. McClintock, excellent report in noting that both ethical and moral considerations are the basis for religious exemption. Ethics and morality are talking about what I believe to be right and wrong. So I don't want to speculate or offer conjecture as well, but I think it's reasonable to say that if someone feels that it's against their moral or ethical code, they could seek a religious exemption. And I do want to add, by the way, I think staff is one hundred and ten percent correct on this. What the city of LA is doing in that, you know, that follow-up questionnaire is is too gray an area that we do not want to go down. The the EEOC regulations are really, really clear on this. If someone fills out the exemption uh form, we are to essentially take it at at face value. And that is respecting, uh, you know, their their right to privacy. Um, and there also remains the choice that if an employee feels that uh, working for the city of Burbank is no longer in their best interest, as regrettable as that might be, that is also a choice that they have. So, look, at the last meeting, I said I supported the compromise, I still do. At the same time, I have been consistent in my belief that a mandate is appropriate. I just felt I needed to jump in because I just want to make sure that we're conveying accurate information. Employees would still have a choice. They may not like the choice that we're giving them, but it is still a choice.
And in in my final words of my thoughts is, again, I I was quoting that I am scared, I don't want to get COVID nineteen. I see my personal doctor quarterly and I was just there two weeks ago and he draws blood because I want to make sure, you know, they analyze my blood for everything, including COVID nineteen. And when I asked him, I said, in your medical profession, does the vaccine prevent me a hundred percent from, you know, basically coming down with COVID nineteen? And my doctor says, no. All the vaccine does is keep you out of the ventilator. It keeps you out from the the process of the vaccine of killing you. So don't walk out of here thinking that, well, I got my COVID nineteen shot, in this case, Moderna, and I won't be infected. So for a lot of the folks that feel by get, by having everybody ma- uh vaccinated, it's gonna prevent you from getting COVID nineteen, it's 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 not, it's a preventative tool. But it's really designed for the individual to keep you out of that ventilator, to give you a good shot at saving your life. So it really is an individual choice. But enough said with that, if there's no, uh, Councilmember Springer.
Yeah, I just um, I just have a question for um Councilmember Schultz and Anthony, what's what's the difference? If somebody takes a religious exemption and they don't get the vaccination? And they don't, and so we have them now, it's pretty clear that three hundred and seventy-one employees, we don't know. I mean, I'm confident that more of them could get the vaccine, but we still have, you know, maybe three hundred and seventy-one who've just filed a religious exemption. That hasn't increased the vaccination rate.
Councilwoman Anthony, go ahead and weigh in, sir.
Well, I want to ask Ms. McClintock, what was our vaccination rate in the fire department before the September mandate came in? Do we have those numbers?
So uh, not immediately with me, but if you give me a couple of minutes, I can, I I think I have them, I can look them up. The one thing I want to be clear is it's not for the entire fire department. Um, it's just for the employees who are subject to the mandate. So it's just for our sworn um sworn employees. But I will have to go back and see if I have um a pre-mandate percentage rate for um sworn employees. What I will say is there were a handful of employees who did get vaccinated. Uh, but what, I I don't know that I had the percentage before and after at this point, but some did. Uh, a small number did go get vaccinated.
Okay, so I think that that would be my answer to Councilmember Springer's question. Putting this requirement in, there are people who are on the fence who, maybe they really don't want to get the vaccine or maybe they just kind of don't want to get the vaccine. And if there's a subtle nudge towards getting it, they're more than likely gonna say, okay, fine, you know what? I've been putting it off, I was delaying, blah, 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 I'm gonna get it done. Now, that's not obviously gonna be everybody, there's always gonna be a section of people who are just, you know, have those deeply held beliefs to say, not get it, and that's fine. But to go from a group of workers who are at forty-three percent to look at our fire department that's at seventy-eight percent, for me, it's about that increase. If we put something in place and we put everybody on the level playing field, we put all of our sworn uh firefighters and everybody else at the same level, new hires, and say, look, this is what you gotta do, I think we're gonna see that higher number, that seventy-eight percent across the board or closer to it. And even now, with our average being seventy-three, I think that number's gonna come up. A- and and like I said, the closer we get to ninety-five, the safer we all are.
Well, you don't know that, you don't, you don't know what the herd immunity vaccination rate is. Nobody does on COVID nineteen.
I think uh, Ms. McClintock wants to add something real quick to the discussion. I used factual information, go ahead, ma'am.
I could perhaps give um Councilmember Anthony a a better response than I gave before. Um, in the fire department, four employees got vaccinated post-mandate. Twenty-six employees requested a religious exemption. Um, the other piece of information that I just want to um provide some clarity on um is the comparison of fire sworn as opposed to IBW employees. Um, I do think, from my my opinion, from staff's opinion, I I do think that there is a difference. Fire employees, it was a county-wide mandate. There are no other agencies within the county that they can go to and not be mandated for a vaccination. For IBW employees, Edison does not have a vaccine mandate and the contractors do not have a vaccine mandate. They're our biggest competitors. Pasadena has a vaccine mandate, Glendale does not. So when you look at the utilities that surround us, Edison, a big stealer of our employees, private contractors, a big stealer of our employees, even pre-COVID, even pre-pandemic, we were always talking about needing to pay market wages in order to retain them. It's just there, it's not an even playing field. For firefighters, there is no place else in the county they can go. Whereas for IBW members, they have other really good options um to easily jump to um that aren't currently, right? Currently are not currently requiring a vaccine mandate. So I just wanted to provide that uh, those two clarifications. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, council, I mean, I I'd like to move this forward. Let's see if there's a motion and we'll go from there. Uh, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I've got to weigh in as well.
Okay.
Uh, I know we're taking a lot of time, but this is very important as far as I'm concerned. This is, it's a difficult decision, but nonetheless, it's a health and safety decision. That's my perspective. Uh, and to your comments about the governor, he's given us local control that we've been asking for, for year after year after year, and now we're gonna use it against him. Uh, that's not right either. But anyway, Betsy, what do we have current, what are our power? What's, what's, how are we going forward right now? Before we take a a vote on this.
So what is the, what is the policy that's currently in place?
Yes.
So on on September fourteenth, the council adopted an employee testing policy. It's basically a vaccinate or test policy. What it says is that by a date to be determined, subject to meeting confer, we don't have the date yet, all employees are going to have to submit uh to testing and if they want to exempt themselves from testing, they can provide proof of vaccination. Um, so that's, that's the policy that we currently have in place. The second piece of that is that the council included a vaccination mandate for new hires. Um, and that went into effect on September twenty-seventh. So that's the basic outline of what the current policy that we are working towards implementing.
And what's before us tonight, how does that differ from the current policy?
Sure, so what's before you tonight is a discussion that the council requested on a potential vaccination mandate for employees. And so the draft policy that I've prepared for your consideration in this discussion is a policy that mandates that employees are vaccinated as a term and condition of their employment. Uh, again, all the dates would be determined as part of the meet confer process, but if we were to move forward at some point, a di- in a date in the future, employees would be required to provide proof of vaccination or required to request a religious or medical exemption. And then there would be no testing option for employees. It's either proof of vaccination or request one of the two exemptions or you are not meeting the terms and conditions of your employment. What the consequences of that are, right, are still subject to meet confer with the with the labor groups. Um, so that that I would not want to speculate on quite yet. But that's the difference is that the policy that you are looking at tonight would actually mandate as a term and condition of employment, vaccination for employees.
So there's more of an incentive to get vaccinated with what we're considering tonight. Because there's more at stake for the employees, right?
Definitely, yeah, of course, yes.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Are you done, Vice Mayor?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Councilmember Schultz.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice. I just wanted to interject with a question that I thought was timely at this point. Um, Ms. McClintock, one of the other things that has been said in emails and on the dais tonight is this concept of if if folks don't get vaccinated, they will be terminated. I had a specific question as it relates to attachment number two. Um, I saw that there were twenty-three jurisdictions surveyed, fourteen of which had a vaccine mandate of some kind, that's about a sixty percent figure there. But what I noticed is not every jurisdiction provided for termination, some policies were silent. So my question is, uh, before I seat the floor back to the Vice Mayor, if um attachment number four, the proposed policy were to be passed by this body, it provides that there can be disciplinary action up to and including termination. Does that mean that termination is not a foregone conclusion? And if so, what is the process for making that determination?
Sure.
It's the decision.
Sure, so um Councilmember Schultz, that language is very standard, typical language that we include in personnel policies for the city. So it does not necessarily mean that violation of a policy um in of itself will result in termination. What it's telling the employee is that violations of this policy are disciplineable and the extent of the discipline depends on a lot of circumstances specific to the incident, right? So it's very standard language for us to have in the policies. Ultimate, a mandate is a mandate, it is a term of condition of employment, right? Ultimately, what the outcome is for employees is a key item that is subject to meet and for, it is an impact on employees. We can mandate a vaccination, but how it impacts employees is something that we have to negotiate with the labor groups. There could be different outcomes besides termination that we all collectively negotiate without starting to engage in that process, I don't necessarily know what that looks like. Um, there, there is, like, for example, the city of San Jose, um, their police union was very opposed to this and they appear to have come to some sort of alternative disciplinary process, right? Um, most of them, most of the policies I've seen are calling for termination. Um, that's how you get to a mandate, uh, but certainly what the ultimate outcome is subject to meeting for and not something that, based on the policy, I think you, it's a foregone conclusion what that looks like.
Uh, Councilmember Springer.
Yeah.
Mike, Mike.
Sorry. Councilmember Telemontis, what would you say to the young woman who's concerned about her fertility? And that's why she didn't want to have the vaccine? What would you tell her?
I would go talk to her doctor. I'm not, I'm not a doctor. I'm not, I'm not an M.D. I don't have the right to tell her anything, yes or no.
Well, her doctor could very well tell her, no, that it doesn't look like it does. But then maybe nobody knows for another ten years. So you're not a doctor, but you'll tell her that you get this or you could lose your job, right?
You know, there's a lot of wadia. If you can play the wadia factor the whole night.
Well, you're not, you're not a female, and so that's why I'm asking the question that there is some concern by young women who would like to have children, and that's why they want, they choose to.
I respect, I respect her concern. I respect her concern. I'm not gonna tell her to yes or no. Go talk to your doctor.
And what if her doctor's?
I'm not a medical profession. I wouldn't feel right saying, telling her. I mean, this is, this is a public safety concern.
It is a public safety concern, but we can achieve the same goal with vaccination and testing. We are achieving it.
I respect your opinion.
Okay, can somebody put a motion on the floor? Let's move this on. We're going around and around now, so let's put a motion. Councilmember Anthony?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we... Ms. McClintock, would we need a one-step, two-step for this process?
No, this is it.
It's in front of you.
I move that we, as the city of Burbank, adopt a COVID-19 employee vaccination policy as laid out in attachment... As laid out in attachment... Four?
It would be attachments four, five, and, four, five, and six, if you want to include the forms, the draft forms as well.
Four, five, and six, and move forward with the meet and confer process.
Is there a second?
Second.
First and a second, further discussion. Councilmember Schultz?
Just briefly, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Anthony, I want to make sure we're on the same understanding. The other unanswered question in all of this is, on the religious exemption, whether there would be follow-up questions? My position is that we should not proceed down that route. Is, as the maker of the motion, is that your understanding?
That is my understanding. I think the city of L.A. has gone too far. I think the EEOC recommendations are fine. Once we start digging into people's religious and morals and ethics, I mean, that, that's a rabbit hole nobody wants to go down. So, yes, let's, let's move forward with the simplest policy possible on, on.
I have one question about that.
Go ahead, Councilmember Springer, followed by Vice Mayor.
With that, if there's an employee who has, three hundred and seventy-one employees have a religious exemption, what happens then? So pursuant to the policy, they would be subject to weekly testing and mask wearing. And if they, for some reason, say their religious beliefs prevent them from testing, then we would put them in an interactive process to see if there's some other accommodation that we could provide. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, let me turn to the maker of the motion. If they'd be receptive to including another exemption, then there would be anybody that's pregnant.
Anybody that's, I'm sorry, what?
Pregnant.
But Jess, you're not a doctor.
And then I'm just asking the maker in a second on the motion.
Ms. McClintock, would our policy allow for an exemption for people who are pregnant?
So what, what our policy, what the draft policy you have in front of you, and how, what staff would recommend, is that if people have concerns about pregnancy, that they pursue a medical exemption through their medical provider. So part of what the medical exemption form allows for is that their inability to get a vaccination could be temporary in nature. So somebody could say, your medical doctor could say, I don't think that it's a good idea for you to get the vaccination for this period of time. And after that, you'd be eligible to get a vaccination. And that is the kind of thing that the city would absolutely work to accommodate. So staff's recommendation would be to not carve out some specific medical condition or disability, separate, excuse me, from anything else, and just to allow those types of medical conditions or disabilities to be handled through the medical exemption process. And doctors will be able to indicate what their, you know, what the limitation is, how long, if it's permanent, those sorts of things. So that's, that's what our recommendation would be.
Mr. Vice Mayor, is that satisfactory?
Yeah, that's good for me. Yeah, as long as they, yeah, that's good. I'm good for it.
Any further, any further discussion, council members? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call for the vote. Let's see where we land.
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Telemontis?
Yes.
Councilmember Springer?
No.
Mayor Futos?
No. Motion carries three to two. Thank you, council members. Our next item is kind of connected. Our la, our second-to-last report is consideration of, is a consideration of a policy mandating COVID-19 vaccinations for employees of city contractors. Ms. Jennifer Becker, Financial Services Department Director, please present the report.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Futos and members of the council. I'm Jennifer Becker with the Financial Services Department, and I'm here tonight to discuss a potential vaccine mandate for contractors who do business with the city of Burbank. This agenda item was requested by Councilmember Anthony at the September fourteenth city council meeting. As you are probably aware, the city of, the Los Angeles City Council recently passed a motion instructing city offices to develop a policy that would require all city contractors to be fully vaccinated against COVID-19. This policy will apply only to new contracts for vendors who physically come on site or have direct contact with the public. Unlike Los Angeles, the city of Burbank has not previously utilized its contracting authority to advance social or economic policy by adding conditions to city contracts. While larger entities like Los Angeles have the ability to influence, influence vendors through their significant buying power, the same is not necessarily true for agencies the size of Burbank. And so far, none of our similarly sized neighboring cities are considering a vaccine mandate for contractors. Burbank currently has a number of health precautions in place to protect city employees and the public. Masks are still mandated at all indoor facilities, and temperature checks are required for anyone visiting for an extended period of time. And of course, the recently adopted employee vaccine policy will further help reduce the spread of COVID-19. Now, while a vaccine mandate for contractors would provide one additional layer of protection, there are also likely to be some unintended consequences if the city were to adopt such a policy. The city of Burbank currently contracts with about thirty-five hundred vendors, and roughly six hundred and fifty of those perform work on city property or have direct interaction with the public. These vendors range from large corporations to independent contractors and provide a wide array of services to the city, including planning and consulting services, facility maintenance, recreation class instruction, and large facility operations such as DeBel Golf Course and the Recycle Center. All of these vendors work under existing contracts that have already been signed and executed. So a vaccine mandate, if adopted, would only apply to new contracts for goods and services issued by the city. Additionally, there are some providers who provide service to the city but are not under contract with Burbank, such as FedEx or UPS, upon which the city could not impose a vaccine mandate. The enforcement of a vaccine policy for city contractors does pose a unique set of challenges for city staff, as well as the many businesses that provide goods and services to the city. The city has no centralized tracking system right now for monitoring the thousands of procurement contracts currently in place, nor do we have a secure location in which to verify and store the confidential vaccine records of our vendors and their employees. If a contractor mandate were adopted by the city council, staff would recommend a process where vendors would be responsible for verifying the vaccination status of their own employees and would sign an attestation or other form with the city that they are in compliance with the mandate. The contractors themselves would also face their own hurdles with meeting the requirements of a vaccine mandate, as our vendors are subject to the same Americans with Disabilities Act laws and HIPAA requirements that the city faces with our own employees. Many will face resistance to a mandate from their employees, especially in certain industries with low vaccination rates, and would be required to review and consider medical and religious exemptions in accordance with the Equal Opportunity Employment Commission. This places a substantial administrative and financial burden on some of our vendors, particularly small businesses, enough so that they may opt out of bidding on city contracts altogether. Large contractors will also be affected, as they may struggle to find subcontractors willing to accept and enforce the mandate with their own employees. So all of the aforementioned challenges would likely drive up the cost of many goods and services to the city of Burbank, with contractors building in the cost of enforcing the mandate into their bids and fewer vendor, vendors submitting bids overall. Additionally, we can expect delays in the contract execution process, as vendors will need time to implement the vaccine mandate and consider the legal exemptions among their own employees. So before I conclude, I should note that there has been significant movement on the part of the federal government to implement employer vaccine and testing mandates on a national scale. The Biden administration recently issued an executive order requiring all federal government contractors to be vaccinated against COVID-19. Similar to the city of L.A., this mandate would only apply to new government contracts. The administration also directed the U.S. Department of Labor to implement a nationwide vaccine or testing mandate for all employers with a hundred or more employees. If this mandate moves forward, the Burbank City Council would need to consider whether the city should align with federal policy, which would exempt small businesses and independent contractors, or implement a broader mandate which would apply to all city vendors across the board. Given all the unknowns at this time, staff recommends that the city council not move forward with a vaccine mandate for city contractors, or at least delay adopting a policy until more is known about how the federal mandate will impact the many organizations that do business with the city. If the council does choose to move forward with a mandate, staff recommends limiting the requirement only to vendors that provide services on city property or have direct interaction with city employees or the public. So that concludes, concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and thank you.
Councilmember Anthony, why don't you lead the discussion? Your agenda item, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we have any, do we have any contractors currently that we know of that have a COVID vaccination policy?
It's very possible, but that's not information that we would necessarily ask a vendor for, so we wouldn't know at the time that we contact with that vendor.
Okay. Looking ahead with the, the new, the new Biden order, do we think that most of our contractors are going to be vaccinating their, are they gonna have a COVID vaccine mandate soon? I mean, do we expect them to be doing this anyways?
Well, there's two parts to that Biden mandate. First, it would only apply to employers with a hundred or more employees. So that does limit the number of contractors that the city contracts with that would be subject to that rule. And second, it is a vaccine or test policy. So what the mandate would say is that employers with a hundred or more employees would be required to have weekly testing for all non-vaccinated employees. So it wouldn't go so far as to be a mandate.
Okay. But currently, we have no stipulation on testing or any of that stuff with our contractors?
No, we don't. And unfortunately, you know, once we're under contract, we can't, in the middle of a contract, reopen and renegotiate for those sort of provisions.
Sure, sure, sure. No, I understand that. Well, I think we should do at least something moving forward. At, at the minimum, minimum, a vaccination or testing policy, mostly because the, the federal government is already asking for that from many of the contractors. And so just falling in line with that and, and keeping that, you know, level across the board. Do we have any other, let me ask you, the, the Burbank Unified School District, what is their policies with contractors? Do you mind what they're doing?
I believe they do have a vaccine mandate for all contractors that come on site. From, that's my understanding of their policy.
Okay, okay. And then the other, did you mention the other cities that are doing this, or the other, you said L.A., right?
City of Los Angeles, and what they're, oh, I, I see Ms. Albano's.
No, if you're gonna explain what they're doing, that'd be great, because I think it's not what we think, so go ahead, Jen.
Certainly. So the city of Los Angeles adopted that motion on August eighteenth. What their contract department is currently planning on doing is writing a provision into their city contracts that says that contractors will be required to, that all contractors that come on to city property or interact with the public must be vaccinated. But the contractors will, will sign that contract saying that they will implement that policy, but they aren't planning on, they have no plans for enforcement in any way.
So they're not, they're not checking the contractor when they show up, hey, where's your vaccine card? They're just.
They are relying on the good faith of the contractor to attest that they are abiding by that policy.
Well, actually, I think it's, if I don't, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, when I read it, it looked like what they were saying is you're agreeing that whoever we sent you is abiding by that. So not necessarily that they've mandated it for their employees, but if they know they have employee X and Y that are vaccinated, and we test these others, we'll make sure that who we send you meets that. Not that they are requiring any contractor to mandate a vaccine policy. So I think that's a difference. They're not even mandating that you have a vaccine or testing policy. What they're getting at is, whoever you send here, you're attesting to us that they are meeting these requirements.
That the person who is being sent is vaccinated or has been tested?
In essence, I believe that's right, right?
That is correct, Ms. Albano. Thank you for clarifying. I did confirm that with their purchasing division at the city of Los Angeles.
I mean, that's at least the bare minimum, so there's some sort of paper trail. I think, I think that's not too much that we can ask on that kind of policy.
Ms. Becker, like, for example, say, the bus operators, the contractors that provide the bus drivers, the senior citizen drivers, can, if the council majority supported it via policy direction, could we put it in policy that when the contract renewal comes up? Because I know the bus is supposed to come back to us in the very near future, because we gave them a period that we reduced some of their fees that they were paying us to, and they're supposed to come back. So if these contracts are coming back, can we put that on the table as we decide to, you know, discuss renewing the contracts or modifying when they're asking us to modify something? Can this be something to give direction that, hey, we, as a council, if the majority supported it for policy saying, hey, we want to make sure that effective, whenever this new contract comes up, employees have to be, you know, vaccinated, you know, show proof of vaccination in order to, you know, if it's already coming from Washington, then if they're gonna be, you know, driving our community members around town, that, you know, they be vaccinated for a future contract, maybe not immediately, based on the information you've advised us, but... Because I know with the bus, we have a, a shorter window that was supposed to come back to us, that maybe we can have that in there as a negotiation.
Well, certainly, upon the expiration of any contract, we can, when we go out to bid again, we could request whatever terms and provisions that the council directs us to request. On the second point, though, I should point out that if there is a federal mandate, those vendors would already be subject to that mandate if they had a hundred or more employees, in which case the city would not need to enforce that, because the federal government policy is eventually taking care of that for us.
Okay. Any other comments, direction? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, real quick, you just mentioned, your last comment, Ms. Becker, you wouldn't need to enforce it, but we would verify it, wouldn't we?
Well, no, not necessarily, unless we have an agreement.
We just accept what they tell us?
Yes.
To be the gospel?
I mean, they would sign a contract saying that they're abiding by that policy. I mean, they would sign a contract saying that they're abiding by that policy.
It was a federal policy, basically. Uh, but, okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Ms., uh, Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief. Um, one question, one comment. Um. The comment, and the city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, but if we were to pursue the LA model, here's an instance maybe where they did do something right. There wouldn't be enforcement per se, but the remedy, correct me if I'm wrong, is that it would be a provision of the contract. So. While we may not be policing them, if it turned out that they had violated a material condition of the contract, we would have. A remedy later on in the form of a civil suit.
Well, they could be in breach of contract. I don't know that there'd be much more of a remedy, but yes, we could. And. Yes, app, you know, absolutely. And I, and I just wanna say that, uh, the Mr. Mayor, that you were correct. That as things come up for, it's not automatically if they come up for renewal, we can do this. Some of our. Contracts allow options to renew on the same terms and conditions. And, uh, it's automatic. So if it's a renewal where there's a negotiation or something else that's happening. Then that's a different story and, uh, we can do that.
Oh, thank you. Um, the question that I had is in the staff report and tonight, there's been discussion about the federal policy still being in development. Can you give us any, um, any more information about the timeline for that policy development and when it might be finalized?
I really don't have any information on, on the employer portion at that time. Uh, as far as federal contractors, that's already been put into motion. If you have a contract with the federal government directly. And you're required to abide by that vaccination mandate, but it's different. Uh, the. Department of Labor has never issued an order like this. So there's going to be some legal hoops and some analysis that they're gonna have to jump through before issuing that. And of course, they're gonna have their own issues with figuring out how to enforce such a policy. Uh, across employers all over the United States. So I can't really give you a time estimate of when that might go into effect.
And unfortunately, with a lot of things around COVID and what we're doing, there are. Disputes over whether it can be something that can be done fairly quickly under emergency orders or not. And so I would. Speculate, but it's probably more probable than right that if there is a mandate. And it follows more of those emergency procedures, it will probably be challenged. Because it's following emergency procedures to adopt it as opposed to go through the whole normal process. So, um. I, that's something I've been reading. So I think it's really is hard to judge when that may or may not come about.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, this is a note and file unless anybody has real specific direction. I think Ms. Becker kinda knows where we're going with this. Do we need to give you direction? I don't, I can't.
Absolutely.
Okay. Um, anybody have any thoughts? Uh, Councilmember Schultz?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm just gonna say where I'm, where I'm heading so that, you know, before I make the motion, but I, I think that. Staff is absolutely correct. There really isn't anything that we can do with existing contracts in place. So we're really talking more proactively moving forward. But I think this is a good opportunity for the city of Burbank to lead. So. What I would, what I will make a motion for is that we direct, and, and staff can tell me if I'm wording any of this incorrectly or if I need more clarification. But my motion would be to direct staff, uh, to, uh, pursue a policy in which our contractors who come on to city property. Or directly interact with the public, uh, need to, um. Provide proof that the people that are, that they're sending on our property or interacting with the public, um, are, are vaccinated. And that they're providing that proof, uh, or sorry, that, that is baked into our contracts moving forward.
Do I have a second?
So can I ask for clarification?
Yes, Madam City Attorney.
Is it going to just be proof of vaccination or proof that they've been tested?
Uh, maker of the motion?
I just wanna make sure we understand.
Yeah, yeah. My, my understanding of the city of LA is it's proof of vaccination. Is that right?
You know.
That, 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 that's what I think we should do.
To the maker of the motion, I would probably stay concurrent with our last agenda item, to be fair to our city employees.
Right.
That's what I, as a suggestion.
Yeah. So that, that's what I'm saying is that they would need to provide, as, as a condition of the contract, the people that they would be sending, the contractors. Would need to be vaccinated. That's the motion.
Madam City Attorney?
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Okay, I will second that. Any further discussion?
I, so I have a question. This is for the new, new contracts moving forward?
Yes, that would be correct.
Any further discussion, councilmembers? Uh, seeing none? Madam, uh, City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Talamontas?
Yes.
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Springer?
Yes.
And Mayor Frutos.
I second the motion, but it's okay. I get off track too, but yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now going to our consent calendar. Uh, item number one, Madam City Clerk, can you please read that item?
Going back to the consent ca, um, calendar and. One minute. Okay, that was. The introduction of an ordinance prohibiting the sale of Mylar balloons in the city of Burbank. And that was, uh, item number one.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Schultz, why don't you lead the discussion?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so the reason that I pulled this from consent was, well, a couple of reasons. First, I'd like the public to know, um, that the, the Vice Mayor was kind enough to join me for a meeting on Friday, October 8th. With representatives from the California Retailers Association. I know that there's been a letter submitted that is part of the public record as I understand it, but I just wanted the public to know that based on those conversations. Both the Balloon Council, the California Retailers Association, I believe, understand the gravity of the situation when it comes to these conductive. Balloons that are, um, are causing outages and do pose a risk to our electrical infrastructure. So I, I think that fundamentally, we're all on the same page. I know in the letter, there was reference to Assembly Bill 847. My concern with that is that, um, if I, if I have written correctly here in my notes, it wouldn't go into effect even if passed until 2026. That is concerning because as was discussed the other night at our Burbank Water and Power Board meeting. If I recall correctly, we've had six outages since this caused by Mylar balloons since this was first raised by council. So with that said, I, I understand tonight is just the introduction of the ordinance and I am supportive of it and moving it forward. However, the reason I wanted to pull it is I, I frankly would like a little bit more information from staff. First of all, to our city manager or BWP director, I don't know who will have this information. Before the council meeting tonight, I had requested if, if there was any data from the city of Glendale. Since they have enacted an ordinance that this is modeled after, and I was wondering if they had seen a reduction in their outages caused by the Mylar balloons. I don't know if we have that data as of yet.
Uh, they have not provided us with, uh, good evening and yes, I'm the, the general manager of Burbank Water and Power, Don Rothlindell. Uh, they have not been able to provide us with data. Anecdotally, they have seen a reduction in, um, outages caused by Mylar balloons. However, they've also noted that could be due to the ordinance and it could also be due to fewer, um, celebrations. And people buying Mylar balloons because of the, of the restrictions on celebrations due to COVID. Um, so that is the information they were able to provide us so far.
Thank you very much for the explanation. Um, the other question that I had for staff. Is that in, in the report, I saw that, um, our, our neighbors in the city of LA and Pasadena had not pursued a similar ordinance. But there were other cities, if I recall correctly, Encinitas, Lompoc, I might be misstating that, but. Do we have any idea what they're doing? Are, are they following a similar model of just completely banning the sale, sale of helium filled Mylar balloons? Or is there another remedy they've pursued?
Uh, good evening, Councilmember Schultz. Uh, Tiffany Titus, Legislative Analyst here at Burbank Water and Power. Uh, you are correct. There have been other cities who have banned Mylar balloons. Um, the ci, the beach cities included in our staff report, the city of Redondo Beach, the city of Manhattan Beach, and the city of Hermosa Beach. As well as the city of Encinitas, um, have all cited environmental concerns. And have, uh, banned the Mylar balloons and some of the cities, um, also ban latex balloons. Citing concerns with, uh, beach health, uh, including wildlife concerns, um, you know, birds that, that. Um, swallow a balloon and that can, um, cause health, health impacts on the wildlife. Um, so environmental concerns as well as outage concerns. Uh, additionally, you are correct, uh, the city of Lompoc in the county of Santa Barbara has, uh, banned, um, the sale of Mylar balloons. Only Mylar balloons in the city of Lompoc and that is, uh, due to outages there with their electric system. Um, and, uh, and, and the city of Glendale, as you know, has, uh, banned the sale with limited exceptions.
And, and my follow up to that, I promised my colleagues I'm almost done, but these other cities. Are they completely banning the sale of Mylar balloons even in packaging, let's say, or does it really only apply to when they are feel, uh, filled with helium? Or some other lighter than air substance? Yeah, if anybody knows.
Great question. Um, the, the, the beach cities have banned, uh, Mylar balloons. Some of them have banned Mylar balloons, uh, included in packaging.
Thank you very much to staff. Um, always try to come with a couple of good questions ready. Um. Uh, I, I'm gonna cede the floor to my colleagues, but the point I, I raised in, 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 um. Pulling this from the consent calendar is I just wanna make sure, look, I, I appreciated all the comments at Burbank Water and Power Board the other night. But this is a significant, um, uh, ordinance that could impact our retailers. And, and the only thing I just wanna make sure is that what we're doing is actually going to be effective and solve the problem. That's really my concern here. So what I would suggest is I, I'd be fine to move it forward and vote in the affirmation, but rather than having the ordinance. Come back on consent calendar at a later date, I would much rather have it come back with some additional information from staff. About what these other communities are doing. So we can make sure that whatever it is we're advancing really is gonna be the best fit for our community. Uh, that, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Any further discussion? Oh, Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, you know, I too would like to have more information. Uh, we can move with this ordinance tonight. But have staff come back with more information in regards to some of the cities that were discussed. Uh, that weren't provided in the, in the, in the report, uh, because it would affect our businesses. I mean, obviously. We've had several emails, uh, phone call tonight in regards to the business that's been affected, will be affected if we go forward with this. So I just feel that we should do our due diligence to come up with the best possible solution, uh, ordinance moving forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any further discussion, councilmembers? Seeing none? If somebody wants to call for the motion to move this item forward for action? Why don't you take the lead, Councilmember Schultz? Make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, uh, I would move that, uh, we move this ordinance forward to the second stage. Coming back again for adoption at a later date, but as part of my motion, I would request that it not come back on consent calendar. That it come back for discussion. And lastly, that staff, um, as part of maybe a supplemental report. If you could provide us, um, some exemplars of, of similar ordinances in other communities, not just the city of Glendale, but I'd like to look. At, uh, Lompoc, I'd like to look at. Bear with me, I'm trying to find it here, Encinitas and the beach communities for, for comparison and discussion.
Can I, can I clarify?
Yes.
I'm sorry, cause it might be obvious to everyone, but are you introducing the ordinance tonight? So it will come back for adoption at a later meeting?
Yes, I'm moving it to the next phase. For, I'm, I'm fine with it coming back for adoption. I just wanna be able to. Hold it up, if you will, and compare it to other samples out there. So for tonight's purpose, I'm comfortable with it. We'll see where I'm at once I compare it to the other samples.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure you were introducing it. So I'm just being.
A top attorney.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, second by Vice Mayor. Any further discussion, councilmembers? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call for the vote.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Talamontas?
Yes.
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Springer?
Yes.
Mayor Frutos.
Yes, motion carries five oh. Now is the time for brief council comments, including reporting on council assignments. Who would like to go first? Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief. I already reported on several meetings. I'll just add that on Thursday, October 7th. I participated in the Southern California Association of Governments Community Economic and Human Development, uh, meeting. There were several note and file reports, um, nothing of incredible significance to the city of Burbank. Met with several applicants, applicants for our boards and commissions that, uh, we discussed earlier tonight. And lastly, this afternoon, I had a very nice meeting with the Public Affairs Team at Warner Brothers, just to get a better personal understanding of the, of their operations and their footprint in Burbank. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Anthony?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we just had a council meeting a week ago, so I didn't do too much, but on Monday. I took my son to the Great Wall of Los Angeles in North Hollywood runs along the river. And it has a whole timeline of the history of, you know, the local LA area. And we spent a lot of time in the early part of that timeline talking about indigenous peoples for Indigenous Peoples' Day. And, uh, it was very interesting to see him, he's only nine, and he asked me about it and, um. You know, what it meant and what the words meant and who the people were. And, uh, it's such a great visual history. If you, if you haven't been out there, uh, it runs right along the river, the LA River. And, uh, it's really a gorgeous piece of art.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Councilmember Springer?
Yes, um, thank you. I, um, attended the SCAG Energy and Environment Committee meeting. Um, and the Arroyo Rodeo Communities Joint Powers Authority, you know, that's where we allocate measure and money. And we've spent a lot of time talking about the Bus Rapid Transit Project. Um, I attended a workshop on the, on regional broadband. And, um, with Councilmember Talamontas, the Economic Development Subcommittee. And I participated in the ribbon cutting for a new gym in Burbank, Conquer All Things Fitness. And, um, I went to the, um. Um, A- Assemblymember Friedman's work, workshop on, um, roundtable on housing. And last night I, uh, zoomed the P flag meeting and that wraps it up for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Springer. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of items. Uh, I spoke, uh, before the Leadership Burbank. Uh, students, I also spoke before the RISE program students. And I attended the SCAG Transportation Committee. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I like, uh, Councilmember Anthony. It was a short week from last Tuesday to now, it flew by fast. I did meet with the, uh, Jamie and Romick, uh. From the Young Professionals and the Chamber. We met last Friday to discuss, uh. Uh, continuing, not necessarily chow down, uh, with the mayor, chow down Burbank, but, uh, we, we were talking about, uh. Different things in the new year to still continue to work on getting people to support local business. So it was a very good informative meeting with them. And what I'm not gonna share with the council, uh, I was working on the final, uh, dotting, uh, the I's and crossing the T's for next Wednesday, Wednesday's, uh. State of the City presentation that, uh, I've got butterflies in my stomach and I'm working hard. To, uh, work, give you a, a great presentation of where we're as a city as your mayor. So. I've been busy working on that with butterflies. Okay. Uh, now is the time for brief council comments, including reporting on council assign, oh, oh. See, I got butterflies in my stomach for next Wednesday. Ay, ay, ay. Now is the time for the introduction of additional agenda items. Do members of the council have any items to introduce this evening? Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two items. Um, so first, my understanding is that our next meeting, the Economic Recovery Task Force will be coming back with a report. What I'd like to ask, if we can loop this into the same agenda item, is an update on our small business loans and rental assistance programs.
Okay, I gotta nod, City Manager got it. Anything else, sir?
Yes, one more. This will not be an agenda item. I'm hoping for just a, a white paper memo to come home to council. An update on the status of our single use plastics ban ordinance or the, the development of it.
Got it. Uh, anybody else? Uh, Councilmember Anthony?
Uh, yes, I would also like to request a white paper home to just counsel. Um, on, uh, laying out the path and steps that someone would take to become a licensed firearm dealer in the city of Burbank. And how many we have in the city and how long each one has been in business.
Got it. Anybody else have agenda item? Anybody else have agenda items? Seeing none? We will now adjourn to Tuesday, October 26, 2021, for a regular meeting. The public may view the meeting online or on television, and will be able to provide public comment in the following three ways: by leaving an e-comment on the city's webpage, burbankca.gov/ecomments, by emailing the city council directly at citycouncil@burbankca.gov, or by calling in directly to the council meeting at 818-238-3335. With that, good night, Burbank community, good night, city attorney, city manager, and my fellow colleagues on council. See you later, alligators.